Okay, Annette, are you on?
I certainly am.
Thank you. So, let's call the special meeting of the Calaveras County Planning Commission to order. This is a continuation of our zoning code update process, but we will get started with the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, its stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you have any staff announcements, Gina, other than this is it, we're all here?
Yeah, so, Don Parker called in this morning. He has an emergency, unable to make the meeting today. And then Julie as well is out of the office today unexpectedly, so she will not be attending. We do fortunately have Martha online, so that's good. I have provided you all with a nice, pretty sizable packet of information that has come in recently, and this includes a variety of things. The first two letters on top were comments that were received late last night from, one is from the MyValleySprings.com in relation to animal keeping. The other is from Tom in Fasino with the Calaveras Planning Coalition regarding various topics such as conservation, open space, you know, references to the elimination of the X combining zone, et cetera. In addition, we've got a number of comments, suggestions if you will, primarily from Commissioner Lattish over the weekend, which I appreciate because if, in fact, the commission, the consensus of the commission is to go along with his suggested modifications and changes, then I've got them in writing, so that makes it a lot easier, a lot easier for myself and Martha. In addition, there are some drafting of some language that was asked of Julie. One of them is regarding development standards. I'm not exactly clear, and I think we might have to push this off until she is here and we can have a better discussion about this, but it has to do with variances and possible limited exceptions, so we might not want to raise that today. She's also provided us with her drafting of the small non-profit fundraising activities as requested, in addition to some work on the telecommunication facilities. I believe these were Tim's comments, and I think Martha online will have some suggestions for that as well. We also have the drafting or redrafting of the sexually oriented businesses, in addition to Chapter 17.41, which is enforcement. And again, some suggested changes from Commissioner Lattish regarding employee housing to farm workers, and I think that might be it. That was a lot to digest.
A nice enumeration of the recently received items.
And I tried to put them in, in order for you, so hopefully things aren't too confusing, labeling the documents and whatnot. Everything that has been presented to you has been uploaded onto the county website for the public review. In addition, we have a guest with us today, Mr. Bob Garamendi, and I asked if he would be so kind as to attend just to provide us with a history of specifically the Ag rewrite. I know that the commission had some questions last week about just where did we get a lot of the language and the numbers that rolled into current code in respect to animal production and those, those numbers that we're obviously seeing regarding specifics like hog farms and poultry facilities and dairies and things like that. And so, Mr. Garamendi was actually a member of that committee that we had formed during that time, and I thought it would be best if we all had a really good understanding of, you know, just where did that information come from? How did the language that we have today come to be? And, and I know that we've tasked our Ag Commissioner Jesse Fowler with reaching out to the various agricultural organizations such as the Farm Bureau and the Cattlemen's Association, just to get some concurrence about these numbers, but I'm hoping that today Bob will enlighten us and provide us with that necessary history that we're all kind of looking for, so.
Before we delve into all that, let's clear the rest of our kind of preferatory items here.
Yeah, I'm not sure how you want to approach this today.
We don't have any agenda items today. We have no regular agenda items today. But, Annette, is there anybody online who wishes to speak in public comment not about the zoning code update?
I don't see any hands raised, so I'm assuming it's for the zoning code update. I apologize, Tom has his hand raised.
Okay, so then we will open the public comment portion of today's agenda.
I just wanted to check if you guys can hear me.
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Now we'll close the public comment portion of the agenda, the general public comment, and we'll come back to the continuation of the zoning code update. And I think because Bob is here, we're going to get started with the animal keeping portion, which is, I believe, page 133, and let you, let you come on up and talk to us.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I copied some letters for the commission and planning that, 20 years of history there, and how we got to where we are, at least from a standpoint of the Ag community and their involvement in the process. I'm not sure how in depth you want me to get. Those letters pretty much spell out the history. The Ag Coalition, one of those letters addresses how it was developed or why it was developed. Farm Bureau, Calaveras Grove, the Wine Grape Alliance, the Cattlemen's Association, we're all involved in the process. Of course, it's been 20 years, well, not quite, but close to it.
Nineteen.
That, that the, in 2005, the zoning ordinance for the Ag was adopted by the Board of Supervisors. Is that, I believe, correct, Gina? That's the reference. And now you're revisiting that, that code section. I'm here more or less if there's questions from the commission about the specifics of that. I want to refer to the existing code section, or the code on Ag, and some of the, this is more or less what the Ag Coalition was involved with, the, with the Ag zones, land use and operations. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer or try to answer if I can, so.
I think the biggest concern on our part was just that we're not agricultural experts, and so we questioned some things particularly with regard to the RA zone, the smaller parcels, and looking at these allowed without a use permit numbers of animals, not necessarily on a larger agricultural parcel, but in the RA. So that was, that's what got everyone's attention initially and what we've heard other responses to. We also have comments from previous Commissioner Wooster and a few other folks on things, but have you looked at what the proposed language is and is there anything in there that jumps out at you as problematic?
You really want that to?
It's really short, because there's not that much in here, so.
Well, I, I got to, I read Kelly Wooster's comments, and I agree with, as they pertain to the Ag, with some of those, one would be like the sawmill.
Yeah.
And permitted on A1 and AP zoning. I know of a half a dozen ranchers that have those small sawmills.
Yeah.
And all these coal logs that are available today, they're cutting it into lumber and, and selling it or using it for themselves. And as he said, I think that needs to be encouraged, not discouraged. You know, if there's some limit as to the size, again, I wouldn't know what that would be, but I, you know, I think we all know what we're talking about when they say those small scale sawmills.
Yeah, I think we'll address each of his comments because they did all seem pertinent and something that needs to be looked at.
Well, I want to reiterate, if I could.
Thanks.
The other one would be on the service end of large vehicles and equipment allowed in AP and RA zones or should be allowed. That, again, the whole idea what the Ag Coalition was working towards was looking at agriculture and how can you make it viable, more viable, if you will? How can there be a side job that they can do that can bring in income to maintain that operation? And so, in the original list, we tried to list a lot of those items, and I do think that the service of vehicles, not necessarily the sale or rental of those, but the service could be allowed with that, with minimal impact.
There's a pretty extensive list right here.
Well, those are 20 years ago.
Yeah.
But that, that was the beginning of what the process, and then, of course, it was of.
Yeah, I would suggest, I mean, we've, we've allowed other people to, to chime in as we discuss the, the various subjects, and I've, I think, I've tried to, to digest Kelly Wooster's comments and have, ready to make suggestions, and I, I would suggest that we ask and invite Mr. Garamendi to just stay right there, or sit down if you want, and, and pipe in as suggestions are made as to whether or not they make sense or not.
Well, there's, there's two more items I'll present. One, the numbers. If you look at the way that current zoning code was structured, there are sizes of operations permitted, and then, and those numbers actually came from the EPA, and, and the State Water Resource Control Board looks at that EPA, those EPA numbers, and the small, what they consider a small confined animal feeding operation, that's what those numbers represent. And they are not, let me, I have it here, excuse me. This came right off their website, and it hasn't changed, it appears, that the small confined animal feeding operations are never considered under the definition, regulatory definition. So that's, that's where we started, and that's where those numbers came from. And it wasn't just dairy cattle or cattle, it was, and then the equivalent, the animal equivalent, so you get down into sheep or hogs and then even chickens and turkeys and that. So that's, that's where that came from. The other one, and it seems to be that, well, first of all, second of all, third of all, we found that the residential interface, those residential zones are where the issues are. And I think in the comments that I read this morning, that's where the concern is. And we try to respect that, but stay clear of it at the same time, because you step into that and it's hard to make anybody happy. But our process included the Calaveras Planning Coalition, MyValleySprings.com, those organizations. We got together and we worked through this, and I, I think we came up with something that was at least viable at the time, we being the Ag Coalition, planning and the, the whole process. But one thing that is left here that I have in my notes is the feedlot, and Tim has addressed that, Kelly has addressed it, and I can address it, but I don't know if you want to go through or wait as it comes up. We can do that.
I think we're going to look at each of those comments in Kelly's list, which are the same pretty much lists you have, and address each one of those, but the, the big outstanding issue is the RA zone and having these numbers, the 3,000 hogs on a five acre parcel.
Well.
By right, seems problematic to us.
In, in what was adopted in 2005, that was not the case. So I don't know where it got into RA.
Yeah, so we, we don't know what happened there exactly.
But that was not what was adopted in 2005.
So I think perhaps one of the things that we are going to need to do is go back, take a look at those 2005 numbers, or what even our previous zoning codes, see how much of that was in it, and compare them, and see where we lost the string somehow.
Well, what I'm hoping is that with the Ag community and the Ag Commissioner, that they can give us some guidance on.
It's right here.
Well, is that the current guidance?
Those, those have been obviously changed since, I mean, amended through the process. Those were original concepts there, but I think, I think there are some validity to what is in there, and I think with what Tim has mentioned and what Kelly has mentioned, there needs to be some effort put forward to make that fit. I think, and the way you make it fit is the size of the operation and the location. And I noticed in yours, Tim, that you've mentioned the, it shouldn't be, or question whether it should be an AP.
Yeah.
I think AP is where it should be.
Should be, okay.
I mean, we got to remember that whole process that we were involved with was making Ag a viable industry in this county. And to start peeling off Ag operations, what could be allowed in those Ag operations, begins to chip away at that viability.
Well, your, your opinion holds a lot of weight with me, and I no longer have a question about.
Well, I mean, we dealt with this for years, you know, size and location and things of that nature, and those were put into the, that was part of the process. Not that it's perfect or that, but that's what we tried to do.
Yeah, I think our, our overall inclination is to defer to the Ag community on all the A zone issues. It's really just those interface areas that are the concern.
Well, and I, I think, I'd like us to discuss the subject of feedlots.
Well, we will when we go through Kelly's whole list of items, so that's, we're going to talk about each one of those items, including the sawmills and some of the other issues that all seemed like really reasonable.
Well, if I can be of any further help, I'm here.
We will.
Well, please stick around and, and you fine with him chiming in?
So is there anybody else online who wants to make any comments on this item before the commissioners start talking among ourselves and then asking for more input?
I did have one question. I think Mr. Garamendi made an excellent point about it matters where the location of these operations are, and I was wondering if Gina could pull up the zoning map to show us where RA is located in the county? Is that feasible?
No.
Okay.
But it's everywhere.
It's everywhere. The, the problem is, is I don't have the ability to query and once, so, I mean, if I zoom out in order to get the entire county, you're not going to be able to see the different color and hash, it's going to be very difficult. I don't think it's going to be very productive, but.
Okay.
You can expect that RA is throughout the entire county, it's on various sized parcels, you know, generally speaking, ranging from five acres and up, that's, you know, kind of the, the base, but not always the case. And you'll see them right alongside rural residential, mostly not in residential subdivisions. I think we primarily left our residential subdivisions to rural residential, although you may find, you know, a few here and there. I think generally speaking, they're just, you know, separate parcels, not part of a subdivision that are out in the, in the more rural areas of the county, but they were sized to where a commercial sized operation was not necessarily viable on a, on a smaller parcel. So that's generally where you'll find them.
Okay, so I think our most productive approach right now is let's take a look at the Wooster comments. If I can find them in my stack here, I have.
I'm sorry, I did not provide you with Kelly's comments once again, so hopefully you have them.
I have them.
Okay.
It's just where they are in the pile.
Okay.
I finally broke down, I have about, what, eight folders of subdivided papers.
Exactly. Oh, I, because I think that's the, covers several of the most critical. There we are. So his first comment addresses large vehicle and equipment sales, service and rental, and suggests that we allow service as a permitted use on all resource zones. So I think that's a matter of taking a look at the tables and seeing if, if we can just add those back in without any real consternation and.
I think we, we split, let's see, I'm trying to find it on the table, but I thought I knew exactly where.
So, I think, can just offer, in, in reading these comments, I think what is being conflated is a land use that is a kind of a separate operation and a use versus an activity that's really associated with another operation, right? So, vehicle service, of course, people, ranchers, farmers, you know, service their vehicles, service the tractors, like that's a, a regular part of the operation. They're limited, large vehi, sorry.
Our intent was not to preclude anything that was part of their operations.
Exactly, so.
That what I.
And these don't.
Okay.
So the caution is, so those are just activities, and I think people have said, oh, those are things that we all know are part of those types of operations. They're part of the way of life here, they're part of things that are allowed. That's different than a defined land use that's regulated by the code. So a lumber mill or a sawmill regulated by the code, this land use definition, is not somebody sawing logs. It's not even if my neighbor brings logs over and I saw them up for them. It's not if I saw logs and build my fence out of it. It is a lumber mill or a sawmill operation, where that's what it is on the land. It's a, it's a business, it's commercial, it's larger scale. Same with the large vehicle and equipment sales, service and rental. In my area, they're called United Rentals, hasn't it? I could rent a tractor, I can rent these things, I can go there and rent them, or if I have a problem with them, you know, I can take, and that I can't service myself, I can take them there and they service it. It's an operation. So I just want to clarify that. If the county feels that, you know, having these uses kind of not allowed in these zones is going to be interpreted in such a way to threaten, you know, this, these common activities that occur, you know, that's fine, you can allow them as allowed uses, but also know then what also could, is then allowed? A large sawmill operation, for example, or this large vehicle equipment sales, service and operation facility, that commercial facility. So while I understand that you're trying to not, you know, you're trying to make sure one problem doesn't occur, you're also kind of opening up the door for other problems to occur.
I think there's a solution, and I think that what they are suggesting is a little beyond what you're talking about and a little below the possibility that could be opened up by simply adding it on there. I think that they are suggesting that it might make sense to allow on Ag land a small business so that a rancher could work on his neighbor's equipment also.
And that is allowed to roam home industries as well as your home occupation.
Right.
Right, so that's already enabled.
Well, I kind of go with what you were saying was the first option, where there's, there's obviously concern in the Ag community with what's currently being provided, and what I was going to suggest is that we add a definition back on page 243 for large vehicle in place service, and just the definition would be servicing and repair of large vehicles in the field, and, and add that category on page 20, right under large vehicle and equipment sales, service and rental, large vehicle in place service and have permitted across the line.
So, again, your code, you can do what you want. I'm offering some perspective on that.
I understand.
But I do think some of the concerns that were raised are based on maybe a misinterpretation of what some of this is, and by putting in these caveats and corrections and all these but if, and if, or, but if it's in place, then it's okay, you're ending up with a very complex code, which ends up where there's all kinds of things in there and nothing totally fits or you're very confused by it. So, and Gina can talk to you about how this kind of happens, kind of how it occurs throughout, but what I see us doing in these kind of end days is a lot of kind of nuanced wordsmithing to bring out these caveats, which can end up being like a death by a thousand pinpricks. So again, if, if you feel that that's important to do, we can certainly do that. I would first ask you to consider if what we have in place is actually okay to lay these concerns, knowing that those types of things are allowed through home occupations, they're allowed through rural home industries, these land use. through rural home industries, these land use definitions are not limiting regular operations that occur. I would say on feedlots, I think we can do, I think what Kelly Wooster's suggestion is, is fine to do, and we can do that, I don't think that complicates things.
But I have some other ideas.
I'll leave you with that.
So let's look at home occupations and rural home industries and make sure that we feel like, so it is.
Home occupation is seventeen two five one four oh. Page one thirty-eight, starting at the bottom.
Well, so home occupations isn't a good fit because it talks about residential appearance, and that's not, the kinds of things we're talking about aren't going to fit into that, so let's look at rural home industry.
So.
Or, or we need to add something that addresses agricultural zoning.
So Martha, we used to have, we used to have a use specifically referring to agriculture equipment. Is it, and I, is it possible that we can add something perhaps, maybe that refers to the service of agriculture equipment incidental to an agricultural operation? I know, I know you're kind of wanting to stay away from.
It just seems to me on this, in this instance.
Yes.
We already have a concern from the agricultural.
Right.
Area, and, and I don't think this would be opening the door to many other things, I mean, we, last week I was proposing, or last meeting, proposing lots of suggestions having to do with animals, that we became convinced that they were not needed in the code, and I, I, I can go along with that very nicely, but with, with this, if people were making this a user-friendly code, and people are looking at large vehicle and equipment sales, service and rental, that none of those are permitted in the ag zones, I think there's a real cause for misunderstanding there.
Well.
If, if indeed they are meant to be, and by just adding another, another category of large vehicle in place service and showing it as being permitted on everything, but then it's not, we haven't really looked at the rural home industries, but I see that as industries that are being provided by the people on those sites, and this would be people coming in.
Exactly.
To provide service on ag sites, to service these vehicles, and so I think for clarity, this particular provision is, is needed to specifically provide, I'll ask Mr. Garamendi if he agrees with it.
I, well, I under, what I, what I'm understanding here, we were taking service out of the sale and rental.
No, no, we were going to leave service.
And then the old, and the, and the adopted one, sales and rentals are under a conditional use permit, and so, you know, things got sort of skewed here, and I would agree with, I'm not sure who.
You better come up to the microphone.
So, so it has to do with the way we structure the code now, so instead of having, you know, defined uses in a list enumerated under each zone, now we've created use classifications, and those use classifications more or less categorize everything, and so then it was a matter of where do we find these categories to be appropriate within the different zones, and so it's hard for us to say that in some cases, one use, portions of one use could be okay here, but portions generally speaking are appropriate here, I think what you're looking for is more of a, like a broken out definition of, to separate the two, and that's kind of what we were trying to move away from for obvious reasons, but maybe we just need a little more.
Or note maybe a way to say that these sorts of things that are typically activities that may be going on, on a agricultural parcel.
So I guess.
Just these two, you know, they're good examples, and that a small-scale operation serving other customers would also be allowed on those parcels, I don't see a way to fit it into the framework that we currently have tidily.
Right, right, so.
Go ahead.
So my concern, my question is, is are we, are we, are we suggesting that, that the large vehicle and equipment service is an actual business in which they are providing a service for other people, because Kelly's comments seem to be specific to the need for a farmer or rancher to repair their own equipment and vehicles.
But I.
And, and so I'm questioning, what, what exactly are we talking about, are we talking about Bob being a rancher and he needs to service his own vehicle and somehow thinking that this is going to prohibit him from doing those kinds of things?
No, that's why, that's what I was trying to say to Martha, because I, I agree with Martha that we're not, want to, we don't want to just add a whole nother category.
No, no.
A whole nother use area, but I think we need to make it clear that a rancher or farmer could have a sawmill on their property and also saw fence boards for somebody else and sell them to them, not just for themselves. So a small-scale operation or servicing of other agricultural equipment for their neighboring agricultural community seems a very reasonable thing to allow, because like we said, it's pretty hard to make ranching or farming support that itself entirely without some other activities perhaps going on on the property, and we want to keep that property agricultural as long as we possibly can, so anything we can do to support that seems reasonable to me. I think that's what you're trying to say, right?
That's what, that's actually what we said, and what's happened is that things have changed, and I know it's not convenient, but what, the way this is listed, we went through all this stuff, we went through it for several years, you know, what works, what, what, you know, if it's a sale or, or rental, that needs to be looked at differently than, say, service.
Right.
And I'll go back to the feedlot, I would not combine, say, an auction yard or sales yard with feedlot, those are two, those are totally separate type of operations, one requires a lot of public, you know, participation in that, where feedlots do not, I mean, they're just different types of operation, and when you try to combine it, I mean, we, we, that's part of why I'm here, we went through this process time and time again, and not that it's perfect, but the, the concern that was addressed here is, is we understand that, and it's not that we want to try to sneak something in or make it more confusing, we're trying to make it less confusing, but we're also trying to, like you said, add these uses that are compatible with agriculture and the ranching.
So there's a, just one moment, Tom, so there's the possibility of going in kind of the way Tim suggested, and underneath those sections in that definition, say, in agricultural zone parcels, this level of that activity could be allowed, right, and we would have it with an asterisk or something.
I actually was adding another use that it, that it, large vehicle, large vehicle in place service as a.
But, right, so I think both of those are possibilities to add those, those things, but perhaps we don't have to solve that right now.
We can think about it.
We can just poll the commission to see what is it that we would like to see, and then maybe come back and look at what the simplest, clearest way to add it is, once you and Martha have a moment to think about that, and we can all think about it a little more and look for a place to meld it in.
And the ag community.
Yeah.
But I, and I'm, I'm sorry, I, I feel like I would be remiss if I don't offer this for consideration as well. So we also included seventeen twenty-five oh three oh, which is accessory uses, that says accessory uses that are clearly incidental and customarily associated with a principal use on the site may be allowed in conjunction with that principal use. So we put this in, and it is, in a way, fairly broad, and it's to capture things like that. So, yes, sawing logs on the property and giving board, you know, for my friend who is also a rancher and doing that, that's incidental to my agricultural operation, it's customarily associated, just like everyone has said, oh yeah, that happens every day, we assume that happens. So that's to allow you to capture all these things, rather than specifically calling individual activities out, when you start to do that, you realize you can't capture them all, what if somebody said, well, I also do, you know, um, cabinetry, so that's like small-scale kind of manufacturing, but manufacturing's not allowed, do we then need a caveat for that? And once you start putting caveats in, and there's caveats for some things but not others, then you start to wonder why, well, why is there a caveat for this and not for this? That must mean that's not allowed, it just, over time, and as these things come in, it just gets complicated and interpretations start to happen. In my experience, and cleaning up a lot of codes, sometimes the approach of the general umbrella is the more kind of clear and has the more longevity, the approach that has the most longevity.
Martha, can you tell us the page, that seventeen point two five, the, the section you're just, the number for that, so we can look at that.
Accessory uses.
For accessory uses?
Accessory use.
Page one forty-eight.
Yeah, here, I can.
Yeah, it's.
Is it one twenty?
It's chapter seventeen two five zero three zero.
Yeah. Accessory, okay, that, and that's the full extent of what's there, so we could, I, I think Martha is correct, it's easy to start accommodating everybody's specific item and ending up with such a mess, you can never find anything, but it is possible that we could say some examples would include, and then have some sort of a pretty generic one about the agricultural parcels, that I think would take care of a lot of that.
And, and what I was going to be suggesting when it comes to the lumber mills was a reference to accessory use of them, so I think we're into.
Okay.
Into a good approach, I think, I think what we have to keep in mind is when somebody looks at these tables and they see the dash, meaning it's not permitted, it's, it'd be very hard for somebody who's just trying to understand things and who is, wants to offer, to come on to people's lots and, and provide large vehicle service, just looking at this, the first impression would be, without knowing about the seventeen point two five point oh three oh, and where it is and everything else, would look at it and say, well, I can't do that on these properties.
No, I think that's an entirely different, different case, that, that's really a mobile, that's a mobile business, that's not a business, that's not a business that's affecting that particular parcel, that's just a temporary thing, that's, people get business licenses for mobile businesses all the time, so you've actually got a business license established at a different location in an appropriate zone, and you provide some sort of a mobile service where you go to other people's properties to provide the service, that's perfectly acceptable, and we, we approve those business licenses on, on a regular basis.
Yeah, I think what, where the accessory use is not a complete fit is it, is it does imply that it is only with, it's an incidental use for the primary operation, and we are saying that it's not just a use for yourself, that you're doing these things on the property, but that you could potentially provide that as a service to others on a small scale, it still remains subservient to the major use of the property, which is agricultural.
And I think the intent is to prohibit those uses from being the primary use of a property in a resource zone, because we have set those properties aside for resource production.
Well, I think we're all, we're all in agreement as to what the results, it's a matter of.
Just how you get there.
How to get there without, without causing consternation and confusion, and the people who, you know, I think that providing the tables was a great idea, and the idea that people look to these tables and see what's permitted and what isn't, I think we have to be careful that we don't lead to confusion.
Martha, is there?
There would just offer as well, people are doing these, and every, because they're a part of their operate, it's just what they do, you know, Gina on her ranch doesn't go, you know, she has a, say she has a little sawmill and somebody needs some logs chopped, and she does that for them, Gina doesn't go, oh, I better check the land use table, she's like, oh no, this is just part of my operate, of my daily life, so we are looking at the zoning ordinance a little different than how it's actually used in, in everyday life.
I, I think what was mentioned about simplifying the thing, I think is, is a good idea, and I think accessory uses, the way that was presented, it makes sense. One thing we were always concerned about is who's interpreting what that is.
Right.
And if that can be done, somehow defined, where, whether it be a small-scale sawmill, or whatever they use to service of equipment, if that could be, you know, part of it, I think simplification is, it would be good, because you look at what we came up with and it's pretty daunting.
Right. Could we simply add some examples in that, that, that more or less describes exactly what we're talking about, so, you know, years from now, after I've retired and we have a whole new staff, they're not reading this and going, oh wow, yeah, that, that, I don't know what the intent was here, but this is how I'm going to interpret it, because, I mean, we all know that that happens, I mean, people come and people go and, and they, you know, folks weren't involved in the process, and, and the whole intent was lost.
I can't tell you.
Fifteen, twenty years down the road.
Yeah, I have, I've actually, about the building code, had talks with people, and, you know, I've had a plan checker insisting that you can't do something, and I say, well, that's what the code says, and they go, well, I wrote it, and that's not what we intended, it's like, well, I don't care, that's what it says, so I think if we can just add something under accessory uses that clarifies our intention there.
And, and we could put in, in the additional regulations call, we could put a reference to that.
Yeah, or a footnote at the bottom.
Well, I mean, so.
Because other uses are always allowed.
Couple of examples under there would be useful.
But, but I think it'd be good if we're going to do a couple of examples under the accessory use. But, but I think it'd be good if we're going to do a couple of examples under the accessory use, uh, provision. I think we would want to have, um, a reference in the, in the table under additional regulations saying, see section so and so.
Yeah.
Yeah, yes, exactly. That's what I was talking about with footnote or, you know, some way that
But, but that's a, that's a, correctly, yeah, an option.
So I feel like that would take care of the concerns that we are hearing. It, it is our intention anyway. We're not changing what we're trying to accomplish here. So I, and I really, um, I, I understand and I concur with Martha. But I'm concerned that somebody in the future could misunderstand the intention.
And I think it's going to take some time because we literally have to, um, retrain ourselves when we're reading the code and, and now interpreting the code because it's, um, it's, it's, we have to, we have to think of it differently than we've thought of it in the past.
But because searching is possible in the codes, especially through MuniCode, somebody searching for those things
Right.
would come up with this section if we put the examples in there and that could alleviate some confusion. So.
And the examples, I think, need to be clear that, that we are talking, we're trying to include in the examples, people coming onto the property to provide the services. Both with a, with a lumber, uh,
I said
Lumber mill or
Ag operations, um, could include small squa- scale equipment maintenance and servicing, um, operation of a small scale sawmill, et cetera. The, with the operations being clearly subservient to that primary agricultural use.
I don't know if that would make it clear that it's, it would include people coming in to provide
Oh, you're saying you're providing equipment servicing. I, I, that doesn't seem like that's just for yourself.
Okay.
So I think we just need to make that clear. So the wording might, is going to need some
I think Martha and I can work on that. Martha?
I'm sorry, Martha. I, I apologize.
She's not, we're not the toughest jurisdiction she's ever worked with, so I'll just, I'll just put that out there.
And we're trying not to be. We really are. We appreciate so much all the work that has gone on to this. Okay.
Are we ready to public comment on this?
Sure.
Okay, um, I agree with what Martha was saying. The code allows it, um, it's clear to everybody in the room today, I agree with Gina said, but everybody in the room today isn't going to be here in 10 years, so there needs to be some clarification. Um, I agree with Tim that if, you know, footnote here or there with cross referencing would be useful. Uh, and finally, I just want to, as you do this language, please be careful or find a way to make it clear, if you possibly can, when it's an accessory use that's part of the regular operation of, on that property? Or when you have to go through the process to get a rural home industry, um, approved?
Sorry, Tom, what, go through the process to what?
If we can distinguish somehow between those uses that are permitted as accessory uses from those that require processing of a permit for a rural home industry. For example, um, if, if we're going to allow as incidental to, as an accessory use on agricultural property, the manufacturing sale of lo- of, of lumber, um, as an accessory use, we need to clarify that's accessory use, does it not therefore need to go through the rural home industry approval process? Um, that's where the distinction is important, I think. When people are fixing their own, uh, vehicles, cutting their own lumber for their own use, that sort of thing, that's clearly incidental to the agricultural operation. But when people are creating a new value added product and business, that sounds a whole lot like a rural home industry. So if we can make those clear distinctions, I think we're on the right track.
I think we're, we're talking about on agriculturally some parcels, but yes. So let's, can we take a stab at that, guys?
We'll work on it.
Thank you.
And bring something.
Uh, so the next issue is the feedlot and clearly that needs a little work and Tim has spent some time staring at that.
Yeah, um, just a second here, get my stuff in order.
A lot of this is a definition issue, right?
Yeah, I mean, the, what I saw, uh, I thought Kelly Rooster's concerns were very good, uh, very solid concerns, the way things were presented at that point. And I'm trying to now get my own stuff in order here.
I have overstuffed my binder.
Yeah. Could I point out that in the current zoning code, there are two definitions of feedlot? And my personal opinion, now it was the one that was adopted in two thousand and five, addresses some of the issues better than the nineteen eighty-something, uh, feedlot definition. It's just something maybe to look at, uh, it could be built on or, uh, edited, but there are two competing Had a chance to look at what my definite, proposed definition was? I did, yes. You're certainly more the expert than I am. I think my thought was that you want to, we, I think we could all picture a feedlot very, very easily. But trying to, to find what it is, uh, seems to me that it's separate from our animal production. I think it, it certainly could be, but you know, this, and is it Martha? Is she a consultant?
Yes.
I, you know, she brings up a good point. You start getting into this and there are levels. I know today there's an effort in the county being made, or in the region even, being made to get, uh, federally inspected slaughter facilities. Okay, there, I know again, about a half a dozen young people that are feeding their own animals for slaughter, for local marketing. And those are the types of things we want to encourage. And when they have, say, a dozen animals feeding them for a year or whatever it may be, or two dozen animals for that matter, or whatever that number may be, I don't think we want to restrict that. Again, there's, there's a lot of issues, but how you deal with that? And Gina and Martha, you know, they've been focusing on this, but I think we want to, again, encourage that. You know, the, uh, feedlots you pass on the way going down to I five there, of course, that's, those are largest feedlots in California. Uh, how do you, you know, where do you differentiate? It's, it's pretty easy to differentiate, actually. The way we're
We know it, we see it.
We're framing the animal production right now, um, is on a idea of the numbers of, uh, of animals per acre, which, I mean, this is what, uh, the ag, ag commissioner indicated that she thought was the right approach. And for a feedlot, seems to me the key characteristic is that the feed is without a reliance on grazing to get There's actually a definition that addresses that. Well, since I was pulling this out of the hat, I The, the, one of the concerns, it sent me easily, uh, and in that, uh, seventeen oh six, one, one, two, five and the previous rendition, it says it's incidental feeding of livestock. These are excluded. We mean doctoring pens and facility used by four H F F A and that. That was a concern, you know, and those were specifically excluded from that definition. Now, I, you know, how you want to approach this? Uh, I did look at yours. I look at this. I look at Kelly's concerns. Uh, I don't necessarily have the answer, but I do think, again, it's the size of the operation and what it is, you're trying to say this works. And we might want to look at this a little closer, like, you know.
So your, uh, two thousand and four document has, uh, commercial feedlots defined and perhaps that could be part of the solution here. And really it's about the intense, the number of animals per acre and that they are being fed for slaughter, period. It's not like some of the examples that Kelly provided. So it seems like it's a matter of scale and intensity that, that turns it into the kind of feedlot we might have concerns about.
And if you choose to go with the number of animals per acre, I'm assuming what you're talking about, it's, that is specifically to feedlots.
Yes, yes, I'm reading your, this original
Well, not that one, I'm tense.
Yeah.
Because I would not step into number of cattle or with sheep or whatever in general out on the, you know, grazing, if you will. That's where, uh, I, I felt that Kelly's main concern was the definition of feedlot that we gave would be applied to RA zone property, uh, where the, the cattle are out there grazing and that's, that's how they're being fed. Um, so I
Or they're, they're being supplemented because they don't have enough. So you don't want to turn that though into a feedlot that they need a special permit for.
Right, and so that's why I was coming up with a, a certain definition of feedlot, which I'm certainly welcome, I were receptive to having expert advice. Well, I'm certainly not an expert, but I, I, at the, when the ag community was going through this process, we were trying to say what would work, what works in certain sized parcels, et cetera, et cetera. You know, I truly, I really compliment you that you have not used the, uh, the term reinvent the wheel, but that's what I think we're talking about. Um, I, I don't know. I, I, I think Martha and Gina have a, a way to make this better and make it more user friendly. And I would compliment them on that, what they're trying to do there. It's just that if you can keep the same intent through that, what they're trying to do, I, you know, that's, that's the thing. And feedlot is a tricky one. I agree. Um, I think you want to be very careful that you don't make those people that are feeding a dozen animals or two dozen animals for slaughter have to, you know, go through a permitting process.
Well, I think if I can just offer, if we can think again about that accessory uses that are allowed kind of concept that we have in there, which I think is a lot of what Kelly is talking about, those op- those activities being construed to be feedlots. I think we could also, um, take the definition of feedback and maybe at, or feedlot and add commercial establishments primarily engaged in the feeding of cattle and livestock, um, prior to, to slaughter. I think if we can, uh, capture the scale of that, um, in that definition, I, in my opinion, I think we could address the concerns.
I would think commercial feedlots seem like they're a lot more concentrated than five animals per acre generally. They're pretty stinking concentrated.
And they can be because you're not relying upon any grazing.
Well, exactly.
There's no grounds.
So I think if we could, like Martha's suggesting, work on the definition of commercial feedlot and then have that be what we're referring to when we say they're only allowed in these places.
Right.
It would just get rid of the problem.
And we can probably come up with
Everything else would
An exclusion that, that specifically excludes a rancher from, from that sort of thing.
Well, I completely
I mean, if he's, if he's feeding his own livestock, then that maybe we can come up with some sort of an exemption that specifically implies that they're not included, that, that type of operation is not included in this definition.
I think what Martha suggested, that it's, it, that is the operation, the primary operation of that is this very concentrated, intense
Right.
feeding for slaughter. So, and if we even increase the density of the animals and the, I, I, we, I think we can differentiate here.
But I just wondered if that's, this is my attempt to avoid having to do all this. Turning to the ag community and the ag commissioner, whether they could come up with suggestions that make sense that, that include the possibility of there being commercial, large scale feedmon- feedlots, which I think would have to be subjected to, uh, conditional use permits, this sort of thing. And also, it's interesting to me, and there are animal production, we don't have an entry for cattle, um, except for dairy, dairies, cows, uh, cattle, sheep or goats.
We do.
And I, 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 maybe I missed something, but it seems to me we, we would very much appreciate input from the ag community and the ag commissioner, including the ag commissioner, as to just what should be included in animal production and, uh, provisions for feedlots.
Well, it says including cattle, sheep, goats, pigs.
Well, yeah, but then you get down to the, to the designations, they're not there.
Right, because I think we're leaving it to, there are so many variables in what the carrying capacity of a piece of pasture or ranchland is.
That's up to the individual rancher to understand what the land is capable of them carrying and, I mean
That's what we had asked Jessie, if she could provide some kind of generic language that says that the numbers are all dependent on what can responsibly be.
I, I, I'll remember if
And without giving a number.
Am I, am I hearing that our only real concern is residential ag? Because I mean, Bob has pointed out, made a very good point in that, um, uh, those numbers of operations such as, um, you know, those specifically enumerated, like dairies and hog farms and poultry facilities, where we've specifically called out a number of head, those were originally not enumerated in RA. And so I, that, that could just be a simple oversight, um, for us. If, if you feel that that's inappropriate, then, uh, you know, we can probably think about that a little bit further. But, um, thinking that they were just all, you know, resource zones, understanding that RA is, uh, generally speaking, smaller parcels, um,
It seems like dependencies are tempered by size, which in most of the cases, not going to matter because the parcels are going to be big.
Right.
But RA is the only thing I have circled into like, I don't, I don't want to question numbers that came from the ag community. I don't want to just say RA, when I looked it up and made sure, oh no, five acres, this clearly doesn't seem to work. I feel like if we just pulled RA out and put something that said it's dependent on the available land, you know, I, I don't think, or
And I think again, we need to really think about what that is because I, I, I think there's a real need to differentiate between rural residential and residential agriculture. So, I mean, because they are two different zones with two different purposes.
Yep.
Um, so I, I think that's where, you know, Martha and I concentrated on and, and that was the whole reason why we just addressed all of the resource zones rather than just, you know, basically separated residential and resource.
But I, I think it could still, RA still could be, it, it doesn't need to have the same restrictions that RR has. It can be more generous than RR. It just can't be the same as somebody who has forty-eight. It just can't be the same as somebody who has forty acres.
Yeah.
It's these numbers with no context for the acreage.
Well, and I think my understanding was that the ag commissioner was working on a a proposal for animal production. And she was certainly thinking along the lines of animals per acre. So I mean, I think
Bob mentioned.
That already, she's she's already working on that. I don't think we asked her to look at the animal keeping provision, the point oh six oh, but I think it would be great to run.
Well, I've already passed that through their department. So when Martha and I before we even brought this to you initially, that had already been vetted through our farm advisor and the ag commissioner's office. And so I mean, what I'm hearing from you is like, oh gee, they've never even seen this before. And and that's not true. I've already I've already worked with them. I have I have I have sent the ag commissioner and the farm advisor, all of the proposed language. I specifically asked the farm advisor about the about the numbers of head per acre as as referenced under animal keeping, asked for direction. So what you see is a result of of my efforts to bring them into the process.
Yeah, but then when she was taking part in our meeting last time or the time before, she was, as I understand it, she was going to be consulting with the ag community about the animal production figure.
Per your request.
Yeah, yeah, and.
And the only thing she was online about was the difference between the change that we had made from hens to fowl.
Yes.
With the now that it includes some very noisy birds in residential areas and are you sure you want to do that?
Right.
And it morphed into a whole, can you do some additional work for us? And I'm just, I'm sorry, out of all due respect, I just don't see it being necessary when we've already vetted this through the ag community and all of those agencies and and organizations through over over time.
Well, I don't think we want to burden the RA zone with an AUP in order to have any amount of animals. So we need to have some animals per acre perhaps, because if they're a big enough parcel, maybe those numbers are just fine. But if there are five acre parcels, the numbers aren't fine. And these aren't per acre numbers. So so I just think if we can just clarify RA, the numbers.
Could I share my screen and can we walk through may maybe a little history? So currently in RA, there is no kind of limit on animals, just agricultural operations are allowed. So the previous speaker has cracked those numbers of the heads of when, you know, an AUP is required in that previous ordinance that didn't apply in RA. And but there is no limit on it. You could just have as many as you want. There was no limit at all. When we came with the draft, the previous draft, we had RA included in with RR. And that did have a minimum lot size and it had a maximum number of animals, an animal equivalent per acre that were allowed. Through the previous study sessions, RA was pulled out because it was like, oh, this is accessory to residential use, but RA is agriculture forward and residential sec- secondary. So RA got included with the other resource with the resource zones for animal production. What you could do is we could go back if you want to start with numbers and maybe this is what the ag community weighs in on, you could go back and put RA back in with RR, but just massage it so that we're not reliant on a primary, you know, the residential use being primary. But you could use maybe these numbers as a start and allow more through the AUP. So maybe these numbers are what's permitted in RA and more are allowed with an AUP.
And and when you're referring to these numbers, you mean the ones in the animal keeping?
Yes, yes.
But I I think RA should should remain with animal production. I just think it needs to have some limits on it that we don't need to put on the whole rest of the agricultural zones.
And I it could stay in animal production. I guess I'm more looking at these numbers. You're asking for some numbers to start or some limits.
I'm just saying that in in an RA zone, perhaps you have the same list, but added the number is some numbers per acre. And I thought I heard Bob mention that they had in the past, looked at some numbers per acre.
Well, what I said is that the confined animal feeding operations have a number.
Yeah.
That goes back to the feedlot. And I think what you're witnessing, what 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 happens is anytime you get that interface or that, you know, the residential and ag, you start running into these issues. The definition of residential ag, it's sort of supposed to be an equal residential and ag. And you know, I'm not going to promote one thing or another, but that's what it says. And
Exactly.
And it's supposed to be for a small scale, personal scale farming. And you know, we can look at each other and shake our hand and go, yeah, we know what that is. But you know, I Gina gets paid a lot more than me to come up with these things. And Martha, I think you you're here to help, but I don't, I'm always reluctant to put, I know in a lot of CCNRs and that, they have limitations on how many animals they can have on their parcel. And that that's fine, but I think as long as you restrict it to the, you know, the residential agricultural sector or zoning, I, you know, it it's a it's a difficult thing, but I I think you guys are pretty close to finding an answer and I don't have an answer.
I think it could be as simple as saying on smaller parcels, those numbers may be reduced to what can responsibly be maintained by that parcel, you know, I because RA shouldn't be automatically subject to an AUP to have agricultural operations above and beyond what's allowed in RR. I don't think that's right. They they bought in an agricultural piece of land. It just happens to be smaller, so can't support the kinds of numbers that we have listed here. I don't know that I'm the person to say how what those numbers should be. I just think we need something that puts people on notice that when you bought that five acres, you don't get to have three thousand cows on it.
No, but if if.
You know, or whatever.
That's just not. Understand it. It sounded as if the ag commissioner was coming, going to come back with a per acre.
No, we asked her to consider that. She said that there's all these challenges with her getting those numbers. I asked if she could come up with some sort of just general comment about using responsible practices to determine that, not and she said she'd talk to everybody and see what she could do, but she thought it would take longer than the time that we have available. But she'd see if there was some general comments.
Gina probably remembers I it was almost the same time. I don't know if it's a general plan or the zoning. Remember the rooster?
We talk about that all the time.
That consumed the county for, I think, maybe more than a year.
Right, oh, at least, yeah.
Consumed it.
Yeah.
And it it was crazy. And I think I was on a dispute resolution committee during that time. It was just formed. That was one of our first ones and it didn't work. Put it that way. And I think they'd been disbanded since. But those are issues, again, when you have the residential and ag interface. You know, somebody might not mind getting hens going off or peacocks or whatever it may be, but that, you know, someone else, it's like dogs barking at night, you know. And I I think it's something your professionals can probably come up with an answer. But it is, it's always a concern. But we want to try to remember that, you know, it's residential ag.
Yeah.
Or it's rural residential or however that is and not try to paint with one brush.
If indeed with the animal production, we were, we framed it with animals per acre, that that might take care of the concerns about RA.
I just don't think that. I I think we could do that for RA. I don't think it's appropriate for us to do it for the larger parcels. I think there's too many.
Well, Gina's came, you've come up with the animal keeping definition.
Right.
And to me, that that is more applicable to the residential ag and that. Is that rather than?
Well, I I think what we're trying to do is recognize, and and this is we we just have, the counties gotten themselves into this issue. So we have, you know, rural residential, which is a residential zone. And and rural residential is all over the place and it spans from little half acre parcels to twenty acre parcels and sometimes larger. And they're all over the place throughout the entire county. Residential agriculture is a resource zone and and they kind of almost have the same purpose in that, you know, residential is the primary use. Actually, residential is a primary use in RR, but it's an equal emphasis to allow agriculture and and residential in the RA. So it's like a little mini step and so I I think it's it's worth having a difficulty trying to differentiate. This is hard. This is this is rural residential and this is RA. And there are clearly some very distinct differences. And it's and obviously we're finding a difficult time to 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 kind of, but I think maybe Martha and I can work on it. She's, yeah, and maybe come back with with some way to limit the the numbers of livestock in the residential ag zones. I'm not sure how we're going to do it yet. Kind of thinking about some things I'll bounce off of her maybe tomorrow.
Do we I I may have made an assumption that we have, that's where we get complaints or where there are problems as RR and RA. Because that's where you have people who are not professional livestock folks.
Right, right.
And they want to do it. They have a family.
Their hobby farms, you know, maybe it's, but you know, maybe it's it's someone's for each project that turned into a little, you know, a little small scale operation.
Exactly. So.
There are a couple of things in public keeping, very specific things that the the subject has come up several times, but we it's been subsumed into this larger argument, a larger discussion. And that is having fowl as a category in animal keeping. And My Valley Springs raised this question and and the ag commissioner raised this question.
Right, right.
Is whether we want to do that. And I, having lived next to peacocks that were at least five hundred yards away.
Peacocks can be obnoxious, so.
They're they're formidable, but there is certainly as much a presence as a rooster is.
So we we originally drafted that section to refer referring to fowl as hens specifically and and your commission chose to change it to fowl, so.
I don't remember exactly.
I don't remember.
Yeah.
I I I hope I wasn't responsible for that.
Yes.
We're gonna change it back.
We can change it back, yes.
I think so.
Well, I think we ought to do that. Yeah.
Yeah.
That one is the easiest one.
Isn't that nice? And another thing that's that's raised by My Valley Springs is especially with when we're in RR zones, that if you have a one acre parcel, why maybe half of that acre would not be available to animals.
Right.
And I think that's a valid concern. And somehow we ought to deal with it. I think I think My Valley Springs has some some pretty good suggestions on that score. But since this just came in yesterday, I haven't come up with any particular language. But if we can limit the the amount of property that is that we are saying there's room for an animal or two or whatever the animal count is. If we can limit that to the property on the parcel that is actually available for animal use, I think that would be a good thing to do.
I think that's a a great idea. Good luck. I it it, you know, we ran, we went through all this and you start, I mean, I have neighbors that have way too many animals on their five acre. And that's where I think not them personally, but that conceptually, that's where the problems are.
Yeah.
You know, they have a five acre parcel and they put five horses on it. And it, but I I'm not going to be the one to say you can't do that. But that is where the problem lies and that's that's a tough one to address in the sense of the community and what they think they should be able to do.
Was it addressed earlier in the in the earlier versions?
We stayed away from our, we stayed away as much as we could from the rural residential. Not that they didn't have input. Golden Hills, for example. There was a hunting club next to it. You know, five acre subdivision and that that was problematic. Only in the context, I mean, that people felt it was problematic, not that there was really any incident that created that. But those are the, I think anytime you deal with what planning, you and the planning department are dealing with, it's a difficult.
Well, there's a question for Gina and Martha. If if something is permitted under our animal keeping provision, but it is, you've you've got animals that are that would constitute a public nuisance, is can it be, can it be dealt with as a nuisance even though it's permitted under the zoning code?
Through animal services, yes.
So it could, and and I'm not asking to put into the zoning code, but.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, there's all kinds of, you know.
The fact that it's permitted in the zoning code does not mean that it
Does not, right.
be a nuisance.
Right.
Okay. Maybe that's the way to deal with this.
I also think.
Public comment?
Sure.
I really liked Martha's earlier suggestion. And and I and I'm trying to get my arms around Michelle's problem with the numbers in animal keeping and applying them in the RR. Because if you look at it, the animal keeping looks fairly generous to me. I mean, if if we had a it's it's a one animal unit per acre. Right? Right. So then and the and the the numbers were, where are the numbers? Okay, what, minimum lot size is one acre, one animal equivalent unit. So cattle, horses, donkeys, mules, burrows or similar livestock, one animal equivalent per animal, per animal unit. So if you had a one acre lot, you'd have one horse. If you had a two acre lot, you could have two horses. If you had a ten acre lot, you could have ten horses. Do we really? And that's without my right, without any permit at all. Is that really an unreasonable restriction on on the use of the property, even if it's in an RA? It's sheep, goats, llamas, birds. So five sheep or goats, so per per acre. I mean, my my neighbor has a goat on a acre and it's it's dilutive property. So five, five goats on one acre, twenty five goats on five acres, fifty goats on ten acres, is that really an unreasonable restriction in an RA? fifty goats on ten acres, is that really an unreasonable restriction in an RA? And then you look at rabbits and fowl. Forty per acre. If you had four hundred, you know, hens on a ten-acre lot, is that really an unreasonable restriction in the RA? I guess I, I liked Martha's suggestion about putting it here. Now, I also like Michelle's suggestion. Because whereas we are requiring conditional use permit in the RR designation, we don't want to go that far because that's way more expensive than the, the AUP. So if we're gonna require something in RA, it should be cheaper than in RR. Because as you guys point out, the, the problems in RR are like at a different level, right? As, so, I'm just, I'm not, I, I really like Martha's suggestion, and I hope we give it a re, a real, a real try. Now, that being said, some people, I know I've commented and, and decide, thought that some of these animal amounts were a little bit generous. So I'll, I'll let them argue about that.
I, actually, I agree with Tom that those numbers feel generous enough to be applicable to RA. I feel like they might be a little too generous for RR would be more my concern. But you know, what, Hector, do you have any thoughts on this? We've kind of moved away from animal production into animal keeping. Maybe we can sort that one out right now.
My, my, you mentioned, it was mentioned that five horses on five acres was just excessive. What was it, five horses on one acre?
It's, it's actually seven horses on five acres.
Okay.
My, I, I didn't say that. I mean, I, I think the direction the staff is going, it's a good direction, but I can't. You know, the care of animals, I mean, if you, if you have a stable and you're feeding them and that, or if they're grazing on five acres and that's their primary source, I think we've all seen examples. And I, I'm not going to sit here and try to put a number on something that's, I, it's hard for me to do. But we all know when there's too many animals on something. But I, that's, and as long as we're looking at a, I think, now we're getting into RR, which you folks have to do. And RA is, you know, those numbers, like Tom said, I, they sound reasonable. And I think if you look at the definition of an RA where there's a balance between the residential, but it still provides for a small-scale farm or something like that, those numbers sound like a small-scale farm.
Yes.
So that's, but I, I personally can't, don't feel comfortable putting any numbers on those.
So I'm looking at the animal keeping, domestic animals, maximum number. Particularly, does that mean that we would be able to allow five horses on five acres?
Yes.
And, so I would just think that's a lot. That's my own.
I think it would be fine for the guy whose horses are show horses and they're being fed, and they're not, it's a whole different situation.
Right.
Than the guy who has five horses out on his, what's left of his five acres, which is now three acres, or three and a half acres, because he has a tennis court and a pool and.
Oh, no. That's exactly what I was thinking about.
That's a lot. So I think one thing is, on the smaller parcels of RR, we could say the actual property available for animals to help with that situation. I think those numbers for RA seem okay. I just thought, it's just distinguishing between the two of them and making our, acknowledging that the RA parcels are intended to have an equal emphasis on their ability to have a small ag operation.
Right.
And RR, that, that's not necessarily the case. It's like your kid can have a horse, you know? Not intended to have a whole region operation, why not?
I think in, in keeping RA and animal production has some good, good aspects to it in that I think we're assuming that in animal keeping and these restrictions, we're, we're providing enough grazing ground, which the question is whether that's enough. But I, with RA, I think you, you have operations where you have more concentrations of animals, but they are being fed. It's not, I mean, being fed in addition to grazing. So I'm, I'm wary at this point to shift RA back into animal keeping when, without a whole lot of public notice because I think a lot of people in RA are, are quite concerned about this.
Public comment? I think we're getting close to consensus here. It sounds like we like the numbers in animal keeping to apply for the RA zone, but we want to move those numbers to the animal production section. We're a little bit nervous about the numbers currently in ag keeping for the RR designation. So we might want to adjust those down in animal keeping. Is that what I'm hearing from everybody?
Well, it wasn't what you were just hearing from me.
What I, what I was thinking is we could apply those numbers to RA only under animal production and not mess with any of the other zones' numbers. And that under RR, we could clarify that it has to apply only to the available land, and that that would do that one, that might take care of it for the time being if that doesn't.
How that gets enforced is something else, but it would be, it would give a.
Enforcement is always by complaint anyway, these kinds of things, so maybe that would be enough. And of course, going through in, in RR, making sure we remove the fowl and return it to pen. I don't know that, I think it's probably okay in RA maybe. Just the way we have it already, poultry.
That sounds like darn good direction.
Yeah. I'll be quiet if you want. That'd be the direction.
Martha, are Martha and Gina okay with that? I'm just looking at Gina's.
Well, she's still smiling now.
Okay, she's still smiling, okay.
I was thinking. I'm thinking how. I'm sure Martha and I can work on.
Yeah, I, I've got it. I think if we, when we drafted it, if there's an issue, we'll bring it back to you, but I think, I think we're good.
Okay.
Before we move on from animals, I've got something I need to
Sure.
Bring up again. Last time we went through, you know, I was providing, proposing sixteen different entries for animal keeping and all that sort of thing. One thing we're obligated to do, because under section 6.18030 and 6.18040 of Title VI, it provides that private kennels and commercial kennels can only be licensed if properly zoned under Title XV. And so we, we owe it to the animal control officer to make it very clear in our tables where these are provided. And I have a few suggestions.
Can I give us page numbers?
Page number, eighteen. We have, we have an entry under commercial uses for kennel. And I suggest that we say private or commercial kennel.
We, yeah, we've already made that change.
You did.
Yeah.
Okay, I wasn't sure. Okay. And it would be helpful, I think, to, under additional regulations, to say license required under 6.18.030 or 6.18.040.
It says, see also, Title VI animals, that's where all that information is.
Yeah.
Up there under animal boarding, okay?
Well, it's right next to kennel. It, it's in red.
It must be accessory to residential use, okay, yeah, okay, right? Okay.
You did it already.
Well, maybe all this has been done, but I don't know. Page twenty-nine. Again, we have an entry for kennel, and I think we should say private or commercial.
It's, yeah, we've already, we've done.
Yeah, we probably made that change.
Okay, well, I'm.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll, I'll go through these and you just keep saying.
And it has the same visual note already in there.
Okay, what about, what are we showing as far as administrative use for RR, but it seems to me we should have conditional use for R1 and R2. Kennels can be very disruptive. I take, we don't, we didn't have that?
We didn't change that.
Yeah, that, that would be my suggestion. I think it's.
A kennel is five animals, right?
Five or more.
Or more.
Four, four more.
I, I feel like the accessory use permit is adequate. The cost of a conditional use permit seems a lot for a small kennel.
Right. And they're not.
And the, the commercial kennel for Title VI is pretty broad. So that would be even people kind of breeding puppies, if they are training dogs for show, like, so it's pretty broad. And I think through your AUP process, if there, you could always elevate that if you have a certain situation that is.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, page thirty-seven, just to make sure we've got all these already in. There, we don't, unless you've added it from last time, we don't have any entry for private and commercial kennels under commercial uses, animal care, and boarding services. So after veterinary services, it should go in there. And.
I think that actually carries on to something that wasn't resolved the last time we talked. So the kennels are in the zoning code, all tied to their accessory to a principal residential use. So which is why they aren't really included in these commercial and kind of mixed-use areas. I think Michelle brought up the animal boarding facilities that probably should be allowed in some of these zones. But I wouldn't put kennels here, but if you wanted to allow that quote-unquote kennel type use, including like a doggy daycare type thing, then we should identify the zones that you, and the permit level that you want for animal boarding.
Well, I think with commercial, I, I think when we are meaning to include private and commercial kennels, and commercial kennels in commercial zones seems to make, be a, a good fit. I was trying not to have individual entries for private kennels and commercial kennels, so we fluttered things up as I was doing last time. But it seems to me we need to have an entry for at least commercial kennels under commercial uses in commercial zones.
No, no, again, those are tied to a residence.
So I had a suggestion after we talked last time as to maybe create a definition of kennels boarding. Put boarding kennels here and allow them in the commercial zone. So that would be doggy daycare and actual boarding operations, which are different than a breeding kennel kind of a situation.
I think we can, let's see, I'm trying to find the definition of kennel.
They're allowed only as part of a veterinary practice, and that's not always the case.
The board.
And they are typically in commercial areas because people drop their animals off there to, some people, not me, want to go to work. My animals just have to survive on their own for a few hours.
I'm trying to find, oh.
But I think, you know, that, it would make sense to allow boarding kennels by right in the commercial areas or within a.
Particular zone, I mean, we've got four of them. Are you looking across the board? Permitted outright?
I had it not, not in HC.
Is that not in HC? That's what I was gonna say, but otherwise.
With an A, administrative?
I mean, these are commercial zones. I would think they would be okay as permitted, but, you know. Usually, they're primarily an indoor operation. So maybe they would be allowed outright if they're indoor, but if they have an outdoor component, they need an AUP. There's the possibility that they would interrupt others.
That would make sense to me. While we're at it, the, the definition of kennel on page two thirty-four, and I think we added private or commercial to the, to that kennel, comma, private or commercial. We, we don't have boarding in that definition.
That's what I was saying, it needed to be added.
Just to, so the keeping of four or more dogs, or five or more cats over the age of four months intended for boarding, comma, exhibition and company, et cetera.
Well, we talk. So we talked with Animal Services, and I'm gonna share my screen. So what we, based on our last conversations on the topic of Animal Services, we would change kennel to be kennel, comma, commercial or private, and then refer to the definition in Title VI, so that there's that clear connection. And kennels are a term of art.
Right.
The animal boarding, or what you're talking, what we're talking about today, allowing in the commercial zones, are ant, animal boarding, and we talked to Animal Services about this definition. And the only thing they thought we need to do is make sure that this is clear that it accommodates like doggy daycare with a less than twenty-four hour.
Except for, what, so it, it would include both less and more than twenty-four hours, yes.
Right, yeah, right.
I, if you want to call it animal boarding instead of boarding kennel, I'm, I don't care, that's fine with me.
Yeah, we're just trying to keep that. This kennel word is real problematic.
Yep.
Yeah.
So it seems to me that one of the primary functions of a commercial kennel would be boarding of other people's animals.
Right.
No?
No, a commercial kennel is a kennel for breeding of animals.
Right.
Right.
And animal boarding is taking care of other people's animals.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
So part of that is just the way we use terms commonly.
My, my primary concern here is to make sure that we've, we have provided for zoning for commercial kennels and, and, and private kennels.
Done.
So we still have, let's see, page forty-five?
Can I get a public comment in before we pass that page?
Sure.
Great. I like where this is headed because I, I like the fact that the kennels are, you know, licensed under Title VI, and they're inspected annually, and that's great. I don't, are the animal boarding facilities also licensed and inspected annually under Title VI? Or are they not included in Title VI at all? My concern is that if we allow these things
I read it.
by right in a. by right in a district and there's no standards and no permit, then if there's a problem, how do you stop it?
They are licensed and inspected under Title VI.
Great. Thank you.
My concern, Tom, was that, that there was specific language in Title VI about the private or commercial kennels can only be licensed if they are properly zoned, and that's why I'm asking that they be included. So again, on page forty-five.
They've already got it in the industrial zones. Animal boarding included.
Well, animal boarding is included, but I think we need a specific list, listing for private or commercial kennels.
No, because again, they're tied to residential.
Residential use.
The kennel license, regardless of whether it's private or commercial, is tied to a residence.
Okay.
And a residential use is not permitted in the industrial zone.
And would the same thing go for, uh, public and semi-public? Because over there, we have the actual, uh, the, the public animal. Where are we? Fifty-one, I guess. The animal shelter is provided, and that's at least under section six point oh four point oh three oh, that's clearly a public, they own, authorized by the board of supervisors, et cetera.
Right.
So are you saying that we, we shouldn't have anything about private or commercial kennels in that category?
It's not, they're separate.
Okay.
So they're separately defined.
Well, yes, no, I understand that, but that it would, you're saying that it has to be accessory to residential use.
A kennel.
To be a kennel.
Right.
So in that case, by, and each of these where we put in this entry, we're gonna have the, the footnote saying it must be accessory to residential use.
It does.
Great.
Okay, so.
I think we're done.
Do we think we're done with that?
I'm sorry.
Let, let's, let's go back to animal keeping and production, and let's see if we can put a wrap on that for today's activities.
I thought we had a.
I thought we were gonna.
I, I wanna just make sure we're all under the understanding. That's where we're headed.
Okay.
And are there any other public comments that we had received that we have missed some piece up? Like, I think we've addressed most everything that was included in a letter or an email.
I believe so. I believe so.
Bob, is there anything that you feel like we have somehow missed over? And that you think we should talk hours more on?
Well, we certainly can talk hours more. And, um, I think there's a resource out there too, it's the UC Ag Extension. And if they, if there's some hangup on some of these numbers, they might, they might be a good resource.
So Jesse was going to contact them.
And again, I've already been in contact with them, and what they provided me was samples of other jurisdictions require, which were all over the place, some a lot more forgiving, some very restrictive more so than what we've proposed. So we seem to be kinda like running right into the middle of everything else that he's provided me. I asked him specifically if these numbers were, you know, somehow out of whack? Is this, is this legit? Does it make sense? Um, and he says, yeah, it's fine.
I would just like, as part of our final review of these sections and the ag stuff in general, is to, that maybe we all take a little bit of time in the next week to look at this March fifth letter from the Calaveras County Cattle and Fish Association, and just kind of do a quick scan and make sure that anything that they thought should be permitted or needed to use permit, that, that we either looked at it carefully and decided, no, that does, that fits differently in this zone, or
Right.
Yes, we've taken care of that.
Yeah, and our intent is certainly not to undo something that is, you know, is, has, um, expressly, um.
That was like, that was the beginning.
That was the beginning.
Right.
You know, and a lot has happened since. There's been a lot of input from different groups, different interests. And then I think the two thousand five rendition is as close as you can get. That would be the one I would, I would say better represents, well, it is the final project.
Right.
Uh, when you see the references to the two thousand five ordinance. So, uh, that letter, the, the main purpose of that letter was that there was involvement from the very outset in this process. And I wouldn't ask you to go through that list and say, oh, we don't include this or that, because we, we've already gone through that.
It's just a checklist, right, to see that things are, are addressed somehow or other.
And again, I reiterate, I think Gina and Martha are, are in the, going in the right direction as far as if you can make a lot of those uses accessory to agricultural operations and animal production, then I think we're, we're okay.
Right. And we also have to remember that this is not the last time we have the ability to revisit code, so if for something goes on and, you know, this goes to the board and we adopt the, the language that is just somehow, you know, wasn't foreseen as detrimental to the ag community or anything else for that matter, there's always, we always have the ability to come back and revise it, and and it's, and it's a priority of, of the planning department to revisit the zoning code on a, on an annual basis, so, um, you know, the the scenario we're in now where the code hasn't been significantly or comprehensively updated in thirty-five years, we're hoping to avoid that, um, you know, in the future by revisiting it on a more regular basis, so certainly if, if the adoption of the code, you know, causes some significant unforeseeable, you know, situations, that, um, we can always come back and, and revisit it and make modifications where necessary.
I just wanna thank Bob for coming today and showing up and providing all of his expertise. We've it's been like pulling teeth to get people to participate in this process, and your participation today, I think, has made a lot, a lot of us way more comfortable with what's moving forward, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Alrighty. So I have a couple
What's next?
Possibilities for the next thing for us to attack. One thing is potentially to complete, um, Kelly's comments, just to get them taken care of. There's only a couple more areas that he commented on. So maybe we go ahead and take care of those, and then we return to where we were with definitions and finish that up, and then come back to some of these other areas. Or is there a better order from any of your perspectives, Martha, Gina?
I think, uh, uh, finally, it's all, everything we have to do.
Yeah, we have to it all. I'm just trying not to lose pieces along the way.
Okay, so if we're gonna take, uh, pick up on Kelly Booster's comments, um, we've dealt with Yeah, well, and we are gonna table that one because we are, the county has already, um, commenced the process of, um, a cultural resources um, preservation ordinance, so we have in place currently an urgency ordinance that, um, provides, um, uh, um, some oversight for the demolition of, of parcels that, or structures that are falling into this, uh, seventy-five years of age or older, so we've already we, we don't, we're not gonna, we don't wanna roll in any specific language into code until after that, um, that ordinance has been drafted and, um, the board has given us um, direction that that is a priority. We have one year to do that, so, um, that is something that is being moved to the front of the line.
So, uh, my suggestion was simply to refer to that for now, and then when they turn it into a permanent ordinance, we can revisit it.
If we need to.
Come back to us.
Absolutely, if we, yeah, so if there's any modifications in Title Seventeen, it need to be made as a result of that ordinance, then we will certainly do so at the same time.
Great, and then the stream and wetland setbacks.
Yeah, that.
I actually had, uh, some.
Well, go ahead.
I, yeah, I felt like that fifty-foot blanket setbacks seemed pretty assertive.
Dracognian?
Particularly on smaller lots or anyway, I thought maybe we should take a look at that one a little more time.
Before we get into it, I, I need some education on, uh, the definition of development at page two fifty-four.
Yeah.
Um, the development, after everything else in the first five or so lines, says and any use or extension of the use of land. So grazing cattle is a development? I, I, I don't, I don't, I don't understand exactly the meaning of any use or extension of the use of land as being included in the definition of development.
I, I see what they're trying to say there. It's like one of our use categories, but I don't think it was intended to include something like I changed from sheep to cattle. Martha, can you help us with that?
Yeah, and so when you look at the, the definition of development, and remember, that's used in a lot of cases, like that's used throughout the code.
Yeah, that's, I was, I was not about to propose we'd make any major changes to the definition without knowing what, what the.
So I think for the, the stream and wetland setbacks, um, you can clarify in that section where it talks about for purposes of the section development, da-da-da. Um, you could include something like, but does not include, you know, continuance of agricultural operations or something kinda to that effect.
Maintenance of the land.
Um, you know, you, you do just wanna continue to think about the opposite of that, you know, you don't wanna say, you know, but it excludes agriculture. You know, you don't wanna be too broad because you might get those bad actors, right? Um, that may be clear the entire stream bank for agricultural grazing or grading, but then put it, you know, it's really for other purposes. Um, but it sounds like you maybe have some other modifications to this section. Um, so I think we can just kinda look at that together and make sure what you intend this to not apply to is, is clarified in that development section.
Okay. So.
Can I make a public comment?
Sure.
The, there is a, there is a similar setback provision in El Dorado County, but their general plan lists a number of exceptions. Um, some which I like, some which I don't care for. But if you're looking for a list of possible exceptions for your stream site setback, that's where I would look.
That's very good advice. Um, we don't have it before us, so it's hard to take action on that right now.
But we could certainly add, um, grazing and maintenance into that list, and then we get to go and look and see if there's anything more, just as a placekeeper for right now.
Well, it's, it's, you know, uh, reading the exceptions, say, as, I, I just I don't I certainly, um, sympathize with a rancher who has a stream going through his property or her property, um, and uh, if that rancher is told, well, I guess you better dig another well because there's no way you're gonna ever use this water. That doesn't seem appropriate, but, um, the whole intention of these setbacks seems to be, well, we're just gonna, uh, keep this, uh, uh, natural basically, and, and keeping it, uh, so it, it encourages the, the non-disruption of the stream and, and of the property around it. So I, 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 I see a real, uh, friction of this section in a ranch context. And I had a very hard time sorting it out. Do you have any thoughts on this?
Can I ask, planning was the intent? What's the intent here? What adds it, you know, to be applied to?
The general plan required us to protect stream beds and wetlands.
Yeah.
Correct, but again, in, in, in Kelly's definition, he, he, he says, let's use the general plan definition.
Well.
Now, I, I didn't study this one, but I certainly think, hey, Tom, do you have that list of exceptions in front of you?
Maybe, maybe you better get closer to the mic.
Sorry, I was muted. I can get that to you after lunch if that's okay. I'd just be interested to know what those were.
Well, I can, I can tell you some of them off the top of my head. Um, one of the ones that's, that was important in El Dorado County was things like, uh, docks or pull-ins and take-outs, um, for boats and things. Um, because they have a lot of river rafting there, and, uh, so they had exceptions along those lines. Mostly the intent there was to prohibit structures within that fifty-foot, um, setback.
Thank you.
I think I think what Martha was suggesting is that we take a closer look at this and see if we can expand the exceptions a little bit, and maybe take care of the issues with, with the ag at least, and see if there's anything else that maybe we missed. Is that what you were thinking, Martha?
Yeah, I think we could, um, say that it doesn't include, include grazing, um, something about minor structures or implements associated with an agricultural operation. Um, we can carve out some exceptions or, or clarifications specific to agriculture. And I, because I think that's what the main, I mean, maybe the distance is a concern too, but I think the main concern is making sure agriculture operations are accommodated.
But the, the, the environmental concern here is, I mean, if you go up into the, the mountains, uh, uh, in protected areas, uh, even where there are grazing permits, why they've, they've fenced off, uh, large sections of, of stream.
You're talking the difference between public and private land here, though.
Ah, yeah.
I have a mountain grazing permit, and there are restrictions, there is, there's levels of use that are set forth, but we, that's on public land. We're talking about private.
We're talking about private land owned by the rancher that has the cattle that needs.
I think, you know, if you wanna look at worst-case scenarios, but I think if, generally speaking, they're stewards of that land. They don't want that stream bed to be messed up. You know, but they might have to access it from time to time, or, you know, and even, even, uh, maintain it for that matter.
Boy, am I glad you're here today.
I, I would be very careful about starting to put restrictions on private land that you, or, or you were going. Public land, that's already there. And I wouldn't apply that to private land.
I'd very.
That's just a heads up, if you will.
It's very valuable to us that you're here today.
Actually got it up here. So.
And actually, there's, there's grazing leases that I have where that, that happens as well, but that's, again, that's like on East Bay mud ground. So I'm very familiar with what happens, and then. So I'm very familiar with what happens, and then actually in retrospect, it's no doubt it's the best thing to do.
Here are the El Dorado exceptions, native landscaping, fencing consistent with the provisions for fences, walls, retaining walls. Roads or driveways used primarily for access or for the maintenance of a property. Utilities, storm drains into riparian areas and creeks, trails and passive recreation activities, boat ramps, docks, piers, just what Tom was talking about. Construction and maintenance of bridges, culverts, riprap and other drainage, agricultural activities that utilize best management practices as recommended by the Ag Commission. And under conditionally permitted uses, there's some other exceptions. Um, for structures allowed in applicable zones with a minor use permit. Yeah, it, measures that, that are included that provide adequate protection of wildlife habitat, water quality, blah, 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 blah. But that's, that's the gist of it, so.
I would say Tom's suggestion is a good suggestion.
Yeah, so it seems like this list would be a reasonable list to start, and then if there's anything that doesn't seem to fit well for us, we can tweak it.
That, that certainly is, goes in the direction of resolving what I saw as a real conflict.
Exactly. I like that ag publisher piece right there, it's good.
I was ready to jump on that.
Yeah, okay. So have we completed our discussion on that, or until we have something more to look at? You guys have it from here?
I just wanted to say that I would, I would hesitate to shrink that fifty foot setback, I would rather have the list of exceptions be the one you just read.
Yeah, I, 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 I agree with you, I mean, I think, uh, you know, if we have reasonable exceptions.
Yeah, they have, and then, and they have the, the same sort of a situation where they allow it with a use permit to be reduced.
And there are opportunities for variances and limited exceptions, so.
I think we have it.
Yeah, okay.
Good. That was, I couldn't see a way of through on that one.
So what's everybody's preference? To take an early lunch and be back here at like twelve oh five? Or to take a short break and come back and try to work through some of the definitions before we start attacking some of our other items?
I could go another fifteen minutes and then take the.
Okay, we can do that.
Yep, sounds good, yeah. So go to definitions?
Uh, yeah.
Where were we?
That's a really good question, cuz I read through them all and took my little marker off. So Gina, do you know where we were? I know, got so many.
I don't think.
I have so many, so many little tags.
I don't think we were very far yet, um, so.
Cuz we didn't get through any of the definitions.
We stopped.
We stopped before we got to the definition, so we went through the use classification and then put the brakes on.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, okay, I think that's, that's true.
I would easily be confused.
No, I think.
I got my coat all mixed up. Okay.
Okay, um.
What did I, oh.
Go to page two fifty?
Right.
Okay, and unless I'm missing something, a grieve person, it doesn't seem to have the element of their, of what their grievance is, and so I was going to be suggesting that, let's see, I'll, I'll just read the whole thing. Any person who in person or through a representative appeared at a county public hearing in conjunction with a decision or action appealed, or who by other appropriate means prior to a hearing informed the local government of the nature of his or her concerns, or who for goo- good cause was unable to do either, and then I would insert, and whose position has not been adopted by the reviewing body, comma. Which gets the grievance part of it in there.
Say that again.
Okay, so just a, just a part I would add, uh, and who for good cause was unable to do either, comma, and whose position has not been adopted by the reviewing body, period.
And whose position has not been adopted?
Well, what would you like?
No, I, I'm asking, is that what you said?
That's what I said, by the reviewing body.
Comments?
Yes, um, I like Tim's modification. Uh, what this is basically saying is that, it's clarifying the situation where if there is an opportunity for public comment, someone has to have exhausted their administrative remedies by participating in an opportunity for public comment prior to appealing. If there is no opportunity for public comment, for example, if it was just a administrative use permit issued by the planning director without a, a, a hearing, then a person can still be aggrieved and can still appeal, because they had no opportunity to provide prior comments. Um, I like the way that Tim has, has clear, clarified that the grievance part is in there. Necessarily, uh, that, that they have some problem with the appea- the approval as it, as it is, um, as it was made, so, thanks.
If we change the language, uh, to take out the word and and put or, would that satisfy it?
No, cuz the, the, the language before that is what kinda gives them standing, uh, to do this. Um, but what I was adding is an additional factor that they, they did not have their position to discuss.
That they didn't have an opportunity to participate, which I sort of read into once, unable to do so, it just clarifies that.
Yeah, yeah, but that's what I'm.
And, and that somebody disagreed with that.
Yeah, I, I was trying to get in there so that it, it, it isn't, that they, if they hadn't had a pub, a ability to participate, why they weren't in there making their arguments, but their position that they have is not adopted, so.
Well, right, but that's sort of implied in the whole thing. I, I don't have any problem with making the change, it certainly makes for a long and convoluted sentence.
Well, I'm good at that. At the record sheet.
I'm good with it as well.
I say let, let's, um, go ahead and put it in there as pota- a potential change, and then we can look at it again while we see it all together and go, oh, maybe we need to make two sentences out of that or something.
Yeah, I, I did have a question about this. Um, it says any person, and what people often do in this situation is, you know, they'll appeal on behalf of an individual in the organization and on behalf of the organization. Um, so it says any person, um, doesn't say.
Or through a representative.
Yeah, through, so through representative, so representative could be an organization, okay.
Yeah. In person is defined on page two sixty-two as any individual, firm, association, organization, partnership, business trust, company, or corporation. So I think we're got, recovered.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Well, I have one other item on that page, alteration, and it says any change, addition, or modification that changes the exterior architectural appearance or materials of a structure or object. Do we really want to limit it only to physical changes to the exterior, cuz alterations on the interior could be as a result of a use change? So Martha, I'm not sure.
Okay, would I have to go back through and look at every instance of alteration because of what you?
Yeah.
Well, yes, technically, an alteration could be something interior too, I think that the code as it relates to alterations, that wouldn't matter, um.
Yeah, I, I.
I would, I would have to just go back and verify everything before I'd feel comfortable making that change.
That's fine, I, I just wondered if we knew that it's specifically used throughout this code with the intent to only refer to exterior.
That might understand, I believe so.
Like, it, it props up a couple more times, so that's enough of an answer, and I, unless we notice something in our final review that conflicts with that, I, I think it's fine.
Okay.
Anything on the next page?
Yeah, I'm not really sure why we have to have a definition of building, comma, detached. We have a definition of building, and we have a definition of building attached.
Because it's considered detached even if it's attached by only a tiny corner.
Okay.
I.
But that, uh, okay.
For the purposes of the zoning code, it would be different for other things.
Anyhow, that, that's fine, I just had the question.
And I wondered, um, if we should have some sort of introductory sentence that says these definitions are for the purposes of interpreting this zoning code, because a lot of these words have other meanings in other contexts.
Oh, you're afraid somebody might come to this?
Well, they're gonna say alteration means something different, or this means, but really for the art purposes, this is what it means.
And actually, that's been done before. People will give us a definition from another code and try to apply it in Title seventeen, and we have to remind them that it's inappropriate.
So that would just be stated at the beginning.
Yeah, just for the, you know.
Public comment, um, we're talking about alterations, interior and exterior. Um, uh, back at seventeen sixteen oh six oh, the demolition or alteration of structures seventy-five years of age or older, we use the term alteration in section B.
Um, yeah, which, which, I, I would suggest, since we took, I think that was inadvertent, I think that's going to be eliminated.
Oh, okay.
Looking at Martha to see if she's nodding.
Well, that we're gonna have to look at that again anyway, yeah.
Okay.
That's, I didn't bring it up there. Okay, are we on to two fifty-two?
Yes.
Okay, I, and the, and building, comma, non-conforming, and this, I, I, I will come up again on other non-conforming things, uh, I, I think if you look at page two seventy-three for use non-conforming, I think it has a better treatment of what non-conforming is. Um, use non-conforming, uh, the use of a building structure, side or portion thereof, which was lawfully established and maintained, but which because of the adoption and application of this built zoning code no longer conforms to the specific regulations applicable to the zone in which it is located. I think that's better than saying it no longer conforms to the regulations set forth in this zoning code, because it never did conform to the regulations in this zoning code. Well, this zoning code, I've assumed is the, is the current, is what we're dealing with here.
I, so that was my question, is when we say this zoning code, or do we mean the Calaveras County zoning code? Or this addition of the code?
Well, we avoid that if we do use the approach that, that's used for non-conforming use, and just say, uh, but which because of, under the building, non-conforming, because of the application of this zoning code, this zoning code to it,
Well, they both say this.
Well, they up, hang on, then says, uh, no longer conforms to the specific regulations applicable to the zone in which it is located, just follow the.
Is that different than no longer conforms to the regulations set forth in this zoning code?
Yeah, but this, because of the application of this zoning code, which means, the clear meaning to me is.
They both say that.
Well, I know, but, wait a minute, just, let me. When it, when it's saying because of the application of this zoning code, it must be talking about the one that we're dealing with here, this current.
The difference is because of the adoption and application of this zoning.
Well, that's fine.
Should I add the word adoption?
But it, it doesn't, my, my problem was that it doesn't make sense to say it no longer conforms to the regulations set forth in this zoning code, because it from the meaning and the phrase before it, this zoning code means the one that's being enacted. Now, I just suggest we keep the approach that's used under use non-conforming, so it says no longer conforms to the specific regulations applicable to the zone in which it is located.
I, I don't have any problem with them matching.
Let's go with it.
There'll be other.
But it's, but it's not necess.
Well, it's, 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 it's just nonsensical.
It's just the last few, I'm, I'm talking about the difference between saying the specific regulations applicable to the zone in which it is located versus no longer conforms to the regulations set forth in this zoning zoning code, I think the more generic one might be better for building non-conforming, cuz it might not be about the zone, it could be about something else, I don't know. I guess in every case, so it's gonna be tied to the zone one way or another.
Well, I mean, if you wanna make it simpler, you can just say, uh, uh, because of the application of this zoning code to it, comma, does not conform to the regulations set forth in this zoning code. If you like that better. I just have a, it, it isn't, it never did conform with this zoning code. That's, that's my whole problem. Martha, do you have a?
Hi.
Preference?
Well, it, I do have, and I, I do understand what you're saying, the, your problem with this. Um, I think we can word smith something, um, cuz I also can see what Michelle's saying about the zone maybe not being appropriate, but I think we can change it to, um.
It's, it's simple if you.
Generally parallel to the other one, but, but make sure.
And get rid of, no longer conforming to this, cuz.
That's, that's the problem, I mean, and you could just, you could just say, does not conform to the regulations set forth in this zoning code, and that'd be fine with me.
So the only thing I had was on the next page, two fifty-three, is do we need to include new construction and below that, construction new? And say it's a newly constructed building or structure? Because we had a discussion about that in some other item. And I remember coming back and I made a little note here that maybe we need to differentiate between construction and new construction. I think it was critical somewhere, buried deep in the three hundred pages or so here.
You're right, I do remember that. I do remember that there's a clear distinction.
Or at least just look at it and see if we think it's necessary or not.
Then still on.
I.
Oh, go ahead.
I guess I, I don't know how to define new construction versus, I mean, isn't by the fact that you have new, new construction, construction that wasn't there before?
Seems like the construction is actually describing new construction. But it, but it's been used so generically here. So I don't know. We had this issue somewhere though, where we point, where it specifically used the terms new construction.
Public comment?
Yes.
There are three uses of the term new construction in the code. One of seventeen twenty-seven oh three oh, pre-application review. Mandatory pre-application review, pre-application review is required for all new construction or additions of more than two hundred square feet in a commercial or industrial zoning district. So that's one.
But I'm just saying, like, doesn't the new?
Take care of it.
It was, yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
Okay, the other one is definition of a project. Any proposal for a new change or change used for new construction alteration or enlargement. And then the last one is, sorry. Access.
Yeah.
Attic, proof of legal access required. Proof of legal access for the nearest public road, as indicated by reported deed, parcel or subdivision map, or other document determined adequate by the planning director shall be provided for all new construction and site alteration. So the question is, does new cover? Does the ad- adjective new need to be really, say, it's self-explanatory?
Yeah, is it self-explanatory in those? And it was used specifically intentionally in those.
Yeah, but.
Which it was.
Right. I, I, I don't see the problem. I mean, I think new, I don't think we need to define new. And added to construction. I, I, I didn't see.
I'm fine with it.
Okay.
It's not confusing to me.
Okay. Up, up higher on page two fifty-three, compatible. That which is harmonious with and will not adversely affect surrounding buildings and or uses. I would like to have that, that which is harmonious with and will not adversely affect taking out surrounding buildings and or uses in the surrounding area. Surrounding buildings, to me, could well be adjacent.
Yeah.
And I think we, we want it to be a little.
Want to go beyond adjacent?
Yeah.
Right.
Then we're all okay on that. Under deck, that's near the bottom of the page. Platform either freestanding or attached to a building that is supported by pillars or posts. We can have decks that are just cantilevered out without pillars or posts, can we?
Well, you can, but they're still supported by some kind, the wall. You know, it probably should say by walls, pillars, or posts, something like that.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Maybe this is a good time to break for a minute.
Sure, let's.
We're not to get through.
Maybe, should we get to E?
Sure.
Break there.
Okay, so. I'm not sure where we were left under development. We were talking about this earlier, that any use or extension of the use of land, that, that makes sense and is needed in this. The phrase at the, at the very end.
Yeah. So they were gonna look at that already.
I know that that's what came up when we were talking about the stream setbacks.
Right.
Is this something that's under consideration?
No, that, that should stay in there, in the definition of development.
Okay, I, I can just accept that. How's that?
Right. Yeah, because we're gonna clarify it elsewhere. That's fine.
Yeah.
Okay. Then we're to eat.
I don't have anything else. Any, anything you guys want to add before we take a break for lunch? Okay, so we will be that, let's say, at twelve thirty.
Let's say that, yeah.
Let's say that. Works for me. Okay. So we're ready. So the April third meeting of the plant, Calaveras County Planning Commission is back in session after lunch. And we're going to pick up on page two fifty-four.
I'm done.
With the definition section at E.
I have on two fifty-five, not clear what the, the second sentence, such term also.
Not two fifty-four before we.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's just really minor. Where it says electrical code, it says any ordinance of the county regulating, but it should probably say the California Electrical Code and any state or local codes regulating the alteration, repair, and installation of.
Good to me.
Whatever the, the standard term for incorporating all that is.
You might want to flag that for Julie to look at.
Like, it's not really a Julie.
No.
Necessary thing. It's just a reference.
Okay.
By the way, Tom.
I mean, I have wording for it if you guys want it, but I'm sure you have. You've done this a million times.
By the way, Tom, thank you for bringing up the El Dorado exceptions to the stream.
Was it El Dorado or Amador?
El Dorado was the exceptions. I saved it. I can email it to you.
Okay, well, because I wrote, I thought he, I thought he said Amador, and that's what I wrote in my note. I was gonna go back and look, but.
It was El, well, the stuff I found was El Dorado. I think that's.
It's El Dorado, yeah.
Oh, okay, okay.
But he, he had referenced Amador and something else.
Oh, okay.
So that's why.
Anyhow, thank you, Tom.
I would have been looking in the wrong code.
By the way, in your packet, there's a one-page email to me, from me to Gina about building envelopes. You can ignore that. That was just a letter, email from me to Gina, I think.
Okay.
Okay.
So, next item.
Two fifty-five. Such, erect, the second sentence. So I, now, I, now I think I understand the meaning. Such term also includes the painting of wall signs, make it clear. Yeah, the, the painting. So if you paint something on a wall, that is considered an erection of a sign. Is that what we're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
I think it's when it's directly on the wall instead of hung on the wall.
Yeah.
Okay, two fifty-six.
Nope.
On two fifty-seven, I have something for B, heat. And it says thermal energy of a radioactive, conductive, or convective nature. I think that means to say radiant, conductive, or convective nature. It was a little scary to me that.
Down under intensity of use, the extent to which a use or the use in combination with other uses affects the natural and or, I put in and or.
Okay.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry. I.
Oh.
I missed it.
Okay, the intensity of use.
Yes.
Second line, natural, and then I would say and or.
Oh, okay.
Anything else?
Well, under junk, I circled garbage and said, not defined. Well, okay, garbage is garbage. Move on.
That's okay. I thought it was funny. We had to define junk.
One man's junk.
I have a layer on my drawings I call a junk. You know, it doesn't show up, but it's just for me to put stuff on.
Yes, and, and the next page too.
Yeah, it's.
Yeah. The two sixty really helps.
Really, what I didn't know.
I have a comment on the description of lot area. The area of a lot measured horizontally between bounding lot lines. I, I think it's the area of a lot enclosed by bounding lot lines measured horizontally. Right? I mean, that, I see what you're trying to say there, but it seems a little awkward.
You should see what.
I, I'm not sure exact wording. It's just that we want to say the area, it's the area. So it's, you can't just measure horizontally and be done. Yeah. Or calculated from horizontally made measurements.
I think what you said was great. The area of a lot between bounding lot lines measured horizontally. Won't that work?
Well, it's an, gets, the area of a lot enclosed by.
Yeah, okay.
Between bounding lots.
Yeah, okay.
Measured horizontally.
We just need the word horizontal.
Well, then we get back to the question.
It's that it's level. You can't measure with the slope is what she's trying to make sure is clear there. But I'll leave that to you guys.
I think, on page two sixty, I was, before seeing the, all the examples, I was struggling with this rear lot line with those strange angles, and that was very helpful. Let's see that.
So we don't have anything like that currently, do we? Like this rear lot line description?
No, not codified anywhere. We have an old diagram that was drafted for us by John Anderson, who was a licensed landscaper that was working with us as a planner three. And, and so he, he put something together for staff, but no, it was nothing that was in code.
On page two sixty at the bottom, lot nonconforming. A legal parcel of land having less area, frontage, or dimensions than, I would add, currently provided for instead of required.
Oh, yeah. And then under M terms, maintenance and repair.
Yeah.
I always think that it should be the repair or replacement of any wall.
Yeah.
Cause it doesn't matter whether it's bearing or non-bearing for the purposes of zoning.
I agree. Under O terms, onsite, an improvement or other reference concerning the subject property which is located on the parcel, under discussion. My which is supposed to be referring to the improvement or any reference.
And then I had a comment on the definition of noise, which might not matter because if we're saying, just with respect to this code, these are the definitions, but. But I looked up noise and I tried, and noise could be anything that's loud. But is, is especially something that's objectionable. This sounds like noises only if it's objectional. So I, Martha, you want to comment on that?
I, I need to look through out and see if that. Yeah, I'll check it.
Yeah, because we could, we could end it after any sound, period. But.
But we're using it generally to talk about objectionable things. But, but it could be a noise that would not be objectionable early in the day and becomes objectionable at night.
That's when it becomes a sound that.
So it's not a noise earlier in the day. Now it's a noise. Anyway, I'll let Martha handle that.
Yeah.
And then I had a comment on outdoor storage. And it says the keeping in an unroofed area of any goods, junk, materials, merchandise, or vehicles. So even if it was in a roofed area but was visible, would that be an issue? Are we trying to, or are we just not worrying about it if it's not out in the air?
Yeah, well, what you, what you're wondering about is like a covered patio.
A carpet is just full of chalk.
Not sure where we use outdoor storage.
Yeah, I don't know where we're using it either, so I don't know if it's an issue at all. And maybe this is really the proper description. I didn't have time to search.
I mean, the one way that we're using it that comes to mind is when we're talking about performance standards regarding outdoor storage, talks about screening and fencing and whatnot. I don't, I don't know if we necessarily want to start requiring screening of all items that, I don't know.
So.
I mean.
So it's required to be screened.
Right.
But it's okay if it's under a roof and still, yeah, that's what I was.
A roof with no walls?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what we're envisioning.
You still can see it. But if it's required to be, yeah. I'll let you guys double check that.
Would seem to need the same protection. Would seem to need the same protection.
I, I think it's okay as ring, cause the unroofed, if you're thinking like carports or, you know, I guess some pool buildings are under a canopy. Where I look at where we use outdoor storage, it is clarified whether something is within a building or not. For the purpose of, of applying requirements.
Okay.
So I don't believe the unroofed is a problem in that definition.
Okay. So pre-existing, it's the same issue. In, in existence prior to the effective date of this zoning code? And does this mean the Calaveras County zoning code? Or that this twenty twenty-four adoption of the zoning code?
Maybe we need a definition for this zoning code. Cause I was assuming it was this current, what we're doing.
So I was, the effective date of the currently adopted zoning code? But is, does that throw us off somewhere else?
I, I don't, does it make a difference?
Well, so maybe. I mean, if only this zoning code caused the problem and, but a lot of things are pre-existing way further back than that.
But.
But they're still.
Pre-existing.
Pre-existing. To this one also.
Right.
So.
So is it really, is it really an issue?
I'm not sure it makes a difference anywhere.
I think, I think maybe we've made it clear.
We cleared it up in the one place where it was most.
Right.
Um, important to be clear, so maybe it doesn't matter.
But Martha and Gina, you are thinking of this zoning code as being the one we are about to enact, right?
Cause really whatever is in place at whatever time you're talking. So if there's an amendment tomorrow, you know, so you adopt this and there's amendment tomorrow, then the next day, this zoning code is what is in.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah. So maybe it, it doesn't matter. I, I'm not sure that it would affect anything in the long run.
I searched for pre-existing, and this is the only use of it in the code so far.
Yeah.
Okay. My next one's on two sixty-three.
I, yeah, you, you go first.
Mine's after yours.
Okay. So just scenic highway, a road identified in the scenic highway element of the general plan. I believe that it does identify all of our scenic highways, but scenic highway is something designated by federal highways or Caltrans. Or look, could be locally designated, but I don't think we do that. I wondered if we want to include that information.
I can see where if a new, newly designated scenic highway is designated by the federal government, it won't be.
In our general plan.
So, yeah.
Till they adopt the plan for it.
Actually, we don't have a scenic highway element in the general plan. So a road identified in the general, as a scenic highway in the general plan.
Yes.
And actually, I think this thing gets taken out. I wonder if it's a holdover from the existing, we don't use, we don't have any regulations specific to a scenic highway.
We should, cause there should be a scenic highway section that bans billboards on scenic highways. That's a requirement of the designation.
The general plan says that the scenic highway that we have, the Ebbets Pass scenic highway, will be managed in accordance with the Ebbets Pass scenic highway plan. So that's in the general plan. Scenic highways used twice in this code in this sentence.
We don't have any, any other copy rats in the county?
We have, um, proposed eligible routes, but we don't have other designated routes. I'm with you if you want to designate some. You let me know.
Ben never done that. I think that's somebody else's next project.
I know, I just. Hey, if I heard three of you pipe, pipe up about it, I'd get right on it.
I've had people call me from Alpine County wanting me to work on theirs. Like, really? I think I put my ears in on this.
Well, they called the right person. Yeah.
I don't know, I.
So a road design.
I think it would, a scenic highway should be a, a road designated by, as a national scenic byway or a California state scenic byway. Or.
Yeah, we could just say identified as. And then not make a reference to the general plan.
Yeah, I, I'll let you.
At least take out the reference to scenic highway element.
Right.
Okay.
It's probably not a big issue.
So.
Yeah, again, it's, it doesn't actually need to be defined in the zoning code.
Well, that's.
That's probably.
That's the other thing too. Okay.
So the general plan refers, makes reference to them as eligible state scenic highways.
Oh, eligible.
Eligible, well, it talks about eligible state, and then it talks about, um, you know, Ebbets Pass being the designated California state scenic highway.
It's national and state.
Yeah.
We should clean it up however we need to.
I mean, isn't, aren't the terms scenic highway, isn't that term used in the, in the.
Yeah.
Equal documents?
Yeah, and people often, I mean, are offended when we say it's not a scenic highway. Cause they, to them it's scenic, so maybe defining it in here makes sense. That what we're referring to is a designated or eligible scenic highway.
Or eligible.
Well, in that case, I would just have it be the same as the general plan, cause you wouldn't want the county to have.
Two definitions.
If there's no purpose, like there's nothing specific to the zoning ordinance.
There is, we, the zoning ordinance has to include restrictions on nationally and state designated scenic highways. You can lose your, your designation if you don't do those things. And the primary thing is billboard advertising.
Right, and you don't allow them, but it's not just tied to the scenic highway. But anyway, we can put it in to match the general plan definition.
That's fine, we should make sure that we have something in our zoning ordinance that addresses all that. Whatever requirements are current in California.
Ready to move on?
Yes, I'm ready to move on.
Bottom of the page, the front setback. Don't we have some front setbacks that are measured from the, uh, from the center line of the road?
That's in the case that the, the, the boundary is the center line of the road.
And we have a different setback.
Right.
Wonder then if we could end this definition with right, the term located, period. But from what you say, this definition and measured inward from the front lot line is, is accurate.
Uh huh.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. I, I just had that right direction.
Sometimes we have subdivisions that show other ways of determining the setback, but they're on the subdivision paths.
Right, right. And there are those instances where the road is an easement through the parcel and not separate from the parcel.
My next suggestion's on page two sixty-nine. Anybody? These are great illustrations.
Yeah, I really like having all the illustrations.
Yeah, we like pictures.
Yeah, I like the pictures too. Outdoor, outdoor advertising structure on page two sixty-nine. Any structure of any kind.
Yeah. And on two sixty-eight, it says the international sign, e.g., handicap parking. I think that should be accessible parking. And we should check for the term handicapped anyplace and replace it. Seventeen informational sign on page two six eight.
Uh, yeah.
I, and this was just something I noticed when looking at this. And I, we should go back to the signs and do we say anywhere what the minimum clear height below suspended or projecting signs is for vehicle and pedestrian walkways? There's some requirements for that. I just couldn't remember.
I don't remember.
So maybe we can just go back, recheck that later, put it in a little note.
What, what's the current approved term for handicap?
Access.
Accessible.
Trying to get.
I had a, I had a sign related question. We didn't regulate moving displays of things on set that are on sale, like, you know, the tourly animals and stuff like that. But is that this, so did we treat this moving signs the same as the moving displays of for-sale items? Or did we treat them differently? And I'm wondering if we did treat them differently, was there a reason?
We decided not to prohibit displays of for-sale items that were like, uh, wind chimes or something, those tourly things. Those called.
Really gigs.
Yeah. Okay.
Yard art.
So if your sign, if your sign is for sale, then you can, you can move while you want.
Sure. Maybe it says for sale.
You want to buy my sign for a million dollars? Go ahead, otherwise it's gonna move. Okay.
That's on that, Michelle, your question about clearance, we do have minimum sign clearance for, yeah.
For pedestrians, vehicular, yeah.
Yeah, for, yeah.
Perfect. This is what happens when I read stuff late at night, I don't go look it up.
That's okay, Martha's got the entire code memorized.
Exactly. I figured.
My next is on two seventy-two. Anybody before that?
Nope.
Okay, under structure, and this was, uh, raised in Kelly Wooster's thing. Anything constructed or erected which requires a location on the ground, including a building, but not including a swimming pool, a fence, or a wall used as a fence. Now, why is a fence or a wall used as a fence not a structure?
You know, one reason for that clarification is that because fences are located in setbacks. So probably, whereas we say you can't have a structure. We can go through and kind of see if that is problematic.
Yeah, maybe, maybe say, cause not all fences are on the boundary, so maybe say a boundary fence or a wall used as a boundary fence. Lot line fence. In Sheep Ranch, we're lucky if the fences are anywhere near the property line.
It's a big guessing game?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's just trying to, there are some things that maybe apply like to a structure and we're not wanting those to apply to fences, whether they're on a property line or not, but. We can double check.
It's not from the property line, it's not a fence in the way you were thinking here, that it might be a privacy screen or, um, cause I think that setback issue is what probably brought this up.
Brought this up, but, but I think we can use, we can put a, a pron, uh, an adjective before fence, to solve that, because in a wall is quite a structure sometimes, um, and, um.
I just, I, the thing is, there may be some regulations applicable to structures that you don't want applicable to fences. So I, that's what I would just want to do. I don't want to wrap fences in if it, it ends up causing a problem.
Yeah, well, but, I mean, this came to, to my attention because Kelly Wooster was talking about, how walls are not structures when we're talking about historic, uh, structures. And, you know, some walls are definitely historic, to my mind, structures. And so it's, and that would be true of things that are on the boundary line. So I think it's something that needs to be clarified.
If that's what we're saying, then we'd say a fence or a wall used as a boundary line fence. If that's the only ones we care about, and then everything else is a structure. There's the whole thing with those unpermitted sheds, like they don't respect the setbacks generally.
No, no, that's the thing, if they, if it's something that doesn't require a building permit, it generally doesn't get caught and nobody thinks to look.
I mean, you think of the, the walls that, you know, were done in the gold rush days with five rocks piled on each other. To me, that's a historic structure, and I'd hate to have it, uh, not be treated as a historic structure and somebody be able to just tear it down.
Not what we're talking about here.
Well.
Public comment?
Yes.
Sure.
I, I think you're right on trying to clarify this, because when you go back to the definition of fence, it says any horizontal or vertical structure, structural device.
Yeah.
Forming a physical barrier intended to enclose areas, separate properties, form a screen, or prevent intrusion. So it's a very broad definition, it includes the word structural. So you might want to clarify this as a boundary fence, cause that would, um, as Michelle was suggesting, and Tim suggested.
Want to just take that under advisement, Martha, and look and see if it is consistent, if we do that?
I would have a problem with the, with the, what I consider a historic wall on the, if it happened to be on the property line, that would be wrong.
But that would be okay, cause we're not saying you have to do anything with it.
Well, if it's, it, we are when we're talking about historic structure.
Right, but not here.
No, I know, but the historic structures, we're accepting walls.
Right. So I think when calling this a boundary fence, take care of that. For our purposes, cause this is not going to say you have to remove it, it's saying it doesn't count as a structure.
Well, it depends, when we're talking about historic structures and the destruction of, if it's not included in the term of structure, then it wouldn't be covered by a historic structure provision. How about?
Sorry, we'll double check, but we might be able just to remove that altogether. Um, I think that, uh, caveats that we have for our structures and the setbacks may be okay. So I, I think we, Gina and I can go through and. I think we might be able to take it out.
Okay, if you can make it make sense, that's great.
Then it would be just but not including a swimming pool. The other thing that I thought might be excluded would be like on-ramp patios and that. might be excluded would be like on grade patios and that kind of thing.
So that, this is kind of where we get into, you know, we just gotta, um, put some boundaries on ourselves, so those on grade things are excluded from.
Elsewhere.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Then under M four, structure nonconforming, it's the same concern we had before about, uh, no longer conforms to the regulations set forth in this zoning code, so if you could just make that consistent with what we were talking about before.
As a result of adoption and application, yes.
Et cetera. And then N is a nice swimming pool. You have a swimming pool and the first step is six inches to get down into the swimming pool. We have a problem with saying a containing water to a depth greater than eighteen inches at any point. Cause we have points in swimming pools that are less than eighteen inches, and that would take the, take it, uh.
Other way, it's saying if any point of it is eighteen inches deep, it's a swimming pool.
Right.
Depth greater than eighteen inches at any point.
Any point. Containing water to a depth greater than eighteen inches at any point, so that would make anything greater than eighteen inches deep at any.
Swimming pool.
So if you had a pond that goes zero to twenty-four, it's a swimming pool.
Well, now that you say it that way, I have a hard time getting it back to my problem.
No problem.
Oh, greater than, okay, okay. Thank you.
I see now what you were.
Okay. All right, two seventy-three. Trailer. I don't understand the, a vehicle with or without motor power. What, I, I would think we want to have a vehicle without motor power which is designed or used to be pulled by another vehicle for hauling materials, et cetera, et cetera. You know, I just, this just, this definition doesn't make sense to me.
I think it's an RV with its own motor.
No, but a RV is, is.
Yeah.
RV is mentioned.
Is motor powered to the power?
But then RV would have its own motor, so that's why you have to have it in there.
Are you gonna call, are you gonna call the RV a trailer? I mean, it's.
Well, I think it's just the, the requirements for trailers encompass all these things.
Also, s- some trailers are, have motors to dump and undump.
Yeah.
They raise the beds to, to dump the material out of the trailer.
You could do without propulsive motor power or something like that. So really, we really are considering RVs as trailers.
So I read it, I thought exactly the same thing, and then I thought about it and realized that probably for the way in which we use this term, this makes sense.
We could start over with a phrase, whether this makes sense anywhere in the real world. But, but Martha, we really, it is, we would consider a Winnebago RV a trailer.
I don't think we have a recreational, do we define recreational vehicle?
We do also define recreational vehicle, but if you kind of go through and where we talk about trailers, and that's really also so we can use, uh, uh, again, an umbrella term to incorporate these kinds, you know?
Yeah.
All of these things without having to mention too, list too many things when we go through. So yeah, the generic trailer term includes.
You have recreational vehicle as including a travel trailer. Or camping trailer, with or without motive power. Okay. It, it, it just isn't, that's consistent with what you're saying a trailer is. And it, it just didn't seem to be in touch with reality to me, but I.
Part of the code deals with parking a trailer. And so it has to be very inclusive.
Yeah.
Um, so includes recreational vehicles, vehicles towing a trailer, or other unusually long vehicles.
Yeah.
And that's under trailer accommodations, so that's why they have a really broad definition.
Okay, I'll just, I'll, I'll accept this. My next one's on two seventy-four.
Me too.
Okay.
I, I just wondered about the, um, definition of vibration.
Yes. I thought it was so artistically, so artistically phrased, I wasn't gonna mess with it. Particles of elastic.
It doesn't. I don't think it's inaccurate, I just think it seems like an odd definition in the zoning code for vibration.
You would rather have a shaking back and forth?
Something that people would understand what we're.
Yeah, yeah. I did not look it up in the dictionary, so.
Neither did I.
Maybe, maybe there's a.
Thought, let's look at that again.
More commonplace definition.
Well, like, and I think it might help to do a search and see where we used it and how, and then.
We're using it in, under nuisances to describe potential nuisance.
Mm-hmm. What, a shaking? Trying to be.
Again, is it?
Again, um, under light industrial, these industrial activities produce limited impacts on nearby properties such as noise, gas, odor, or vibration.
Yep.
I mean, seriously, why not a shaking?
And that's it.
And that's it.
I don't think we need to spend a lot of time on it, maybe it's just something to tag and look at.
So we're gonna get to wall here.
That definitely.
Wall.
That definition of vibration comes right out of Merriam-Webster's collegiate dictionary.
Hmm, yeah.
Here we go.
It's just not useful for somebody to understand what would be objectionable.
Yeah.
I mean, it's accurate, it's fine, and that's, there's a, I, I would say if there's a problem with using something simple like a shaking, um, you can go with it. Okay, we ready for wall?
Yes.
I mean, any vertical exterior surface of building. Now, does that mean a building? Or any part thereof, including windows, I guess it does. It, this does not seem to encompass this is what I wrote down, avoiding the use of the term structure. Also, a freestanding continuous fabrication that encloses or ind- divides an area of land. I guess it could be freestanding or attached. But somehow we ought to include in here what we think of as a garden wall.
Unless we consider that a fence and, you know, and we're only concerned about walls that are part of the.
Structure.
Well, there are walls that aren't part of structure, and they're definitely there, and they're, they're.
I think it comes down to where else it's used, and it's mostly used in setbacks. And heights.
Yeah. Anyhow, I, I think we need to have the, the term include what we think of as a wall that isn't a wall of a building.
Right, because the wall is used to mean both things. It's to mean both a build, side of a building and a, a freestanding fence-like structure.
That's why I'd start the second sentence also.
So, and I guess this is getting into details and nuances. You, if somebody has a freestanding wall, Gina's gonna wanna tell them that that's a fence. And subject to the fence regulations. So Gina actually wants to then look at the definition for fence and tell that person that their wall, that what they're calling a wall is a fence and subject to the, does that make sense?
But in the code, we have a section called measuring the height of fences or walls. And we use the term, the height of a fence or wall is measured as the vertical distance from the ground on the lowest external side of the fence or wall. And then there's a structure, but the structure says fence height, and then the figure says measure height of fences or walls. So we really do use in this code.
So, and, and, and it's common usage, I mean, it is. People will look at something, a brick thing that's six feet tall extending across, um, shielding a swimming pool, they're not gonna say, oh, uh, just step over the fence. So anyhow.
So a vertical structure that divides or surrounds something, that's a wall.
Yeah, but do we, do we have a problem still with calling it a structure? That's why I was saying fabrication, because of what we did on two seventy-two, let's see.
Well, I think the question is how, when we're using it, is it always intended to be part of a building?
Right.
Or a structure?
We use it both ways in this code.
Yeah. We need to somehow take care of what people think of as non-building walls that are not part of a building. Can we leave that with you?
Yes.
Merriam-Webster includes both definitions. It has one as a high-thick masonry structure forming an enclosure, or one of the sides of a room or building connecting floor and ceiling, or foundation and roof. So you can get both definitions put in there, you know, right out of the dictionary.
I'm not sure they're helpful to this zoning code, especially when they talk about things like usually masonry.
Well, no. Right, but, but, you know, I, I think it's, it's important that we, we cover that part of wall, especially with the examples that Tom has brought up, that we use fence or wall in this code. And while we were using that, we're not using it as a part of a building.
Right. Okay.
Can, can that be taken care of, Gina?
I think so, yeah.
Okay.
Do you have anything else on that page?
Well, yeah, under practical communication services, P T S, digital wireless telephone technology, such as portable phones, pages, faxes, and computers. I just, I, I forget how this is used, I guess it's in telecommunications. I don't think of computers as being wireless telephone technology, but.
I'm wondering why we're defining it other than that what we are regulating serves those things.
Yeah. I mean, I.
It doesn't.
I assume that term is used in our telecommunications, I can't think where else it would be.
Yeah, probably, we can look.
Yes. Yeah, it is.
Where do we use it, Gina?
Um, it's under telecommunications facilities applicability and exceptions.
And page?
Um, page one fifty-five, chapter seventeen, two five, two, one, zero. Mm-hmm. Yeah, the requirements of this section apply to all telecommunications facilities that transmit and or receive, um, electromagnetic signals, including but not limited to personal communication services, quote, um, in parentheses, cellular and paging, and radio and television broadcasting facilities.
I don't think it hurts anything, no matter.
Okay, yeah.
And that seems to be the.
Just darned, okay.
I've got a question on the next page, item eight, telecommunications facility, and it says a mobile cell site. And isn't a telecommunications facility a, it could have a mobile cell site, but aren't we normally calling that a fix?
Yeah, we are, we're certainly referring to fixed antennas as telecommunications facilities. So a fixed or a mobile, no?
Well, yeah, I think, I think that went a word, I think a word got dropped off, whether that being mobile or temporary in front of that.
Yeah, that.
Oh, before telecommunications facility. Yeah, okay. That, that would make it make sense. Or do we wanna have, let's see?
Because the whole telecommunications thing has its, an overall.
Yeah. Facility is the term used for the towers and. Do we want to, if we change the title for, to make it mobile, a mobile cell site that consists of a cell antenna tower or, or and or? I'm thinking of the trucks that came into Mountain Ranch after the Pew Fire.
Me too.
Uh, I don't know what all they had in it, but they've made it so that people could get on the internet and use their cellphone. Or use the cellular network, really.
So we're not defining telecommunications facility that is fixed?
Certainly not.
Yeah, well, let, so let me see if that, um, so we're in term, so let me see if, I need to look back into that and see if, what that should be, or even if it should be. But telecommunications facilities as a land use are defined in the use classifications.
Yeah.
So we could say telecommunications facility and reference that.
Well, then would we, would double?
Yeah, I just, I need to, yeah, I just need to look at that and what that was.
That's great.
That was intended to specifically define something, so there's, something got.
Yeah.
It's a something happened, yeah.
And think about and or and or, um, in the middle there after cell antenna tower.
Right. Okay.
I have to admit, I, I tried to come up with some made up term that started with X. Give a long, involved definition.
Come up with something, but we're not going there.
So anyhow, I gave up.
So are we done with definitions?
We're done with definitions, all right.
I guess, well, do we wanna say Z terms reserved, I mean, uh, boy, we do, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've got Z terms, okay.
I think let's take the pile that, it's not very nice, that...
It is a pile.
The clipped grouping of documents that Gina provided to us this morning. And see if we can work through that in order.
Ah, yeah, mine are no longer clipped, so you give me, you do it in order and we'll find them.
So, the first item is animal keeping letter from My Valley Springs, and I think we've taken care of that.
I think we have.
Oh, excuse me. Then we have the letter from Tom.
I think we need to put that off until next week, since the letter came in, Tom, at 11:30 last night.
Yeah, you have a whole week to deal with it.
Yeah, that's right.
So, we'll, we'll put that aside for next week. Discretion to deviate from development standards, which was the language that we asked Julie to take a stab at, to decide whether we need this section at all.
Yeah, and I, I think we ought to discuss this when Julie's here, because I didn't understand where she wanted her suggested language to be and what it would be.
It's the limited exception section.
Would it be replacement?
This is supposed to be in place of, right?
In place of, right, in place of.
Because I think you guys were thinking, well, if we can just roll in some development standards, then we don't need this section at all.
Well...
It just seems like we've just, right?
No, this was, you know, the variance, and then we had the limited exception section. So, I think this was a stab at how we could present that to make it more limited in application, specifically to those few items that we were talking about, which was allowing modifications to improve accessibility that might extend a few inches into a setback, or where we have a situation where somebody wants to do something and that their addition is gonna, a corner is gonna hang over into the setback, either because the existing structure is not exactly where it was supposed to be, or that in order to rectify something on an existing structure, they're gonna be continuing to stick in, so. And to clean that up, so that's what it was for. Maybe everybody wants to go home and read it, and we can address it next time.
Well, yeah, I think when Julie's here, I'd appreciate some clarification.
Okay. Then, the next item is Commissioner Ladislaw's comments about feedlots, so I think we're done with that. Employee housing for farmworkers.
Yeah, I know.
So, should we look at that?
Sure. Page 137, and there's a table on page 17.
17?
No, page 137 is the discussion of the tables on page 17.
17, makes better sense. Oops. Okay.
This, I had a little hard time figuring it out, and then part of it, it's the state, state says that all these provisions only apply to five or more employees. And then they throw in a provision that applies to six or fewer employees, instead of saying five or six employees. Now, I've, I've made, a part of what you received this morning was a submission from me that has at the top, 17.25.120, employee housing for farmworkers. It's unclear to me, when I read all these sections, just which sections apply to, just to farmworkers, and which do not. But I don't see a harm in our, speaking of it, as employee housing for farmworkers, so I'm keeping that. I think the main concern is to tie this specifically to the state statutes, because I read, when I read the provision here, I thought, well, what about the required sanitary facilities? What about, you know, access, what about this and that? Well, that's all provided for in the state. So, that's why I'm suggesting that the introductory language under 7.25.120 be the following applies to employee housing for farmworkers as that housing is defined, as it exists. It looks as if farmworkers is gonna be defined in section 17008. So, the following applies to employee housing for farmworkers as that housing is defined in Health and Safety Code 17008, which applies to five or more employees. I think it's important we put that in there, because otherwise, we're gonna think, under subdivision A, we could get a wrong impression. Then I would like to add a sentence saying, "Said housing is regulated under the Health and Safety Code and the California Code of Regulations." So, people won't be looking to us to see just what are all, what are the requirements for this? You're just saying, here, here they are. So, that's my suggestion for the introductory language. And then for the subdivision A, six or fewer employees, under Health and Safety Code Section 1702.1.5, employee housing provides blah, 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 so that people can look to that section if they want further details. And similarly, under B, saying, "Under Health and Safety Code Section 1702.6, the permitted occupancy," and then there's one more change, because from reading, reading what was proposed in the draft, it sounded as if it might be limited to employees who do not work on the property. Whereas if you look at 1702.1.6, it's clear they're talking about employees who do or do not work on the property. So, that's why I suggested adding the words do or before the do not work. That, that was my thinking for why I'm making the suggestions I am. Well, thank you, I take that as consensus, thank you very much.
Martha, I, maybe I didn't read this carefully enough. I read that there could be people living in the employee housing as part of a family group or somebody who is an agricultural worker, but not everybody is an agricultural worker. Maybe I just skimmed over that.
Well, again, I, I, I have a very hard time pinning all this to agricultural workers. If we wanna say it's housing for agricultural workers, that's fine, because that's certainly one of the main intentions of the state statute, but it's not...
Well, I see, it's agricultural employees, but they might be working on the neighbor's property, really? But so it's agricultural workers, okay. Or their families. I don't have any problem with any of the stuff that Tim suggested, though.
Great. Are you okay with it, Martha, Gina?
Yep.
Well, thank you, that's great.
Okay, flop that one upside down, take it carefully. And the next one. Telecommunications.
Okay.
So...
Page 155.
We also have some public comments on this item.
Yeah. And I've, those public comments that came in from My Valley Springs, I've, I've considered and I've included some of them in what I suggested, and and taken them all into consideration, and sometimes provided something different. So, I can find mine. Okay.
Okay, let's work, figure them out.
So, I, okay, we're on page 155, telecommunications facilities. My first suggested change is on page 156.
I have something on 155, though. Is that we've given some measurements in one meter. We should provide in parentheses the inches for that.
Where, where are you in?
Where's our resident?
Oh, on one meter left, yeah.
Yeah. Just to make it easier for...
We should put in a definition of meter.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, and so in parentheses, just so-and-so inches.
Okay, all right, then your...
Okay, A6B3. Oh, yeah, I put the wrong title, three, and it should be three little i's. I'm suggesting that in the last line, well, I'm gonna read the whole thing. An antenna that is mounted on any existing building or other structure on the overall height of the antenna and its supporting, and I would add structure, comma, tower or pole. The word structure after supporting. Because we're talking about an antenna that's mounted on a, on a building or other structure. So, we're talking about a mounted antenna, and...
I don't understand what structure is doing.
Because it, what's supporting this antenna? Well, maybe...
Existing building or structure.
Well, it's supporting, we're talking about the overall height of the antenna and its supporting tower, its supporting pole, or its supporting mast. I think we needed structure in there for the, if the first 50 feet of this is that's supporting the antenna is a structure, we ought to talk about that, then you'd have, if it's, if it's a 50-foot structure, well, that's, that's not say 50 foot, let's say it's a 20-foot structure. Then where, where are you measuring the 30 feet from, from the base of the structure?
The top of the, that's the existing building or other structure.
Listen, the top of the building.
That's my reading of that.
I see.
This is in non-residential zone.
Okay.
So, I'm thinking like you have a three-story office building, and you have a tower, a structure on top, so I don't...
You don't, okay, so we are talking about 30 feet total above the building.
Above whatever, yeah.
Okay.
Is that, Martha, is that what you intended? Or Gina? There's really just the antenna and its hole that we're talking about.
I tend to think of antenna as including the holes, so that...
Well, my, yeah.
Okay.
So, we okay with that?
Yeah, I, it makes sense to me what you just said. Okay, so, next one is on page 157. B1. So, the co-location of new transmission equipment, removal of a transmission equipment, or the replacement of transmission equipment is permitted by right, provided the modification of existing tower or base station that does not substantially change the physical dimensions. I would suggest we put in aesthetics or noise production of such tower or base station.
That, that change would really, so, co-located facilities and allowing for co-location is very much regulated by federal regulations, and that change really doesn't track with the state and federal regulations for those, so...
Even if the co-location adds new equipment, that adds a generator or adds, you know, other noise production things, we, we have, we're stuck with what this says.
Right.
You know, when...
By right, they can increase the height like 20 feet or something, right?
The, yes, so, there are specific parameters of what that, you know, change in physical dimension is. And, yeah, aesthetics and noise pollution are not included in what the county can put that for that.
Like we do, well, I guess then...
They don't even have to come back to us, they can just go do it, so...
Okay, all right. And then, I'm suggesting, now, I think the version you have says that I'm suggesting this replace B1, and that was an error. So, as far as B2 and B4, let's see, I guess, yeah.
Who?
You go ahead.
For this section, so you really should leave certain parts of it alone. But the real question for you, and for the county, and then we will write it accordingly, but the real question is, do you want, there's kind of four I'll go through. One, do you wanna allow stealth facilities in residential zones? And if so, what permit level? Do you wanna allow non-stealth facilities in residential zones, and then what permit level? Do you wanna allow stealth facilities in non-residential zones, and the permit level? And then, non-stealth facilities in non-residential zones.
Right.
So, and then we'll, we will write those accordingly, but there's some of these exceptions, or, you know, requirements written in there that aren't really up to the county. But those are the question, the policy questions we need from you, and then we'll write that permit requirement accordingly.
Okay, well, then I take my suggested language. I take it as, this is what I recommend as our position, that a conditional use permit is required for all facilities in residential areas, stealth or non-stealth. And in non-residential zones, that stealth facilities are permitted with an administrative use permit, and non-stealth facilities are subject to conditional use. That's, if you take that as, that's my suggested position on what you're saying, and you draft to make it consistent with the federal standards, that's my suggestion.
Yeah, if that, if that's the wish of the commission, we can do that.
So, that sort of captures my position. I'm curious about commercial zones and and perhaps like historic centers or community centers, and we don't have them broken out, they're just non-residential, but like, I might think in a resource production or... or industrial zone that they could have a non-stealth facility with an A U P.
Yeah, I.
But, but I would want maybe a little more oversight over those historic districts and like commercial zones.
Guess what, I, I said what I said was just that we wanna make sure that these are all, that none of these are permitted and that these were the, that if we, if we have it in a
You're putting a, a conditional use permit on all non-residential zones, though, so are there any zones that we don't, that we would believe didn't require a condition?
Non-residential?
Non-stealth facilities are, right now says permitted in non-residential zones, subject to conditional use permit approval. So that's okay, that just means anything non-residential needs a conditional use permit. Well, the stealth ones could have a
Administrative use.
Administrative use permit, but I don't think that even a stealth facility in a historic community center should be done with an A U P. I think there's gonna be enough objection to that.
Okay.
That it might need a conditional use permit.
I certainly join with you on that.
Hector, what do you think?
Do you get the condition of the administrative?
So we would say residential, historic and community centers would require the same thing, right?
Yeah.
A conditional use permit.
Conditional use permit.
What do you mean, community centers?
Well, we call things community centers in our general plan.
Right, but.
So in town. If you're in the middle of San Andreas.
But how am I gonna define that?
So that zone is normally gonna be C P, C one, C two, right?
Right, and actually, community center also involves R one.
But we already said it about residential, so we said all residential.
Okay, for stealth facilities, it sounds like in residential as well as the commercial, the C one, C P, H C.
Right.
Those require a C U P.
Right.
And then all other zones, they would require an A U P. Am I hearing that? So then if we move on to the non.
Stealth facilities would require a C U P in any zone and it wouldn't be allowed in residential zone.
That was the clarification I wanted to make, it sounded like Tim wanted to allow non-stealth in residential with a conditional use permit.
Well, you know, I, I, it's my own, uh, when I picture these awful monopines, I sometimes wonder, would I prefer just having an antenna up, you know, a tower up there that's gonna be thinner and you can see through and, you know.
Well, that, that would be fine with me, me.
So, um, you know, I mean, I think it depends on the conditions.
Oh, in a residential zone, it needs a C U P no matter what.
Whatever.
What it kind of tower it is, I think that's.
So, okay, so we're, we're saying that non-stealth towers are okay in residential zones with the C U P?
I think he's saying non, non-stealth facilities could be permitted in any zone, subject to conditional use permit.
Okay.
Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
So I actually don't have any objection to that.
Okay.
I think the neighbors are probably not always going to agree with you.
No, I understand that.
So.
So.
But we'll comment.
Till we see what the stealth one.
Okay, and so stealth, stealth facilities with a conditional use permit in residential and commercial zones and then an A U P in all other zones?
I think that's what we're saying.
I, I, let's try that again, what?
Stealth facility.
Stealth facilities, a conditional use permit in residential and commercial zones, which includes H C, C one, C two and C P. Stealth facilities as an administrative use permit in all other zones and all non-stealth facilities, a conditional use permit in all the zones.
Yeah, I think you got it.
Okay.
I think you got it too.
You think you got it?
I'm writing it down.
Yeah. Hi, um, I have a question about how we're implementing a public facility implementation measure four D from the general plan. Cause on one hand, these are, we're encouraging co-location, so this, it could start off as a commercial only, uh, or a cell tower, but then could become also later a emergency communication cell tower. And PF four D says, the county shall consider environmental sensitivity as well as the efficacy of site chosen for installation of new emergency communication facilities. Whenever feasible and equivalently useful, sites that are less environmentally sensitive shall be selected for placement of new emergency communication facilities. So I'm wondering is, will we always be looking at alternative sites?
We'd always be looking at alternative sites, we haven't gotten to that part yet.
Okay.
At least that's my, my position, is they always need to look at alternative sites.
Okay, the next thing I had was C one A about the setback standards. And this has always bothered me, but then when I looked it up on page one sixty-six with wind energy systems, that's where I find that we, so far have had no objection to the idea of wind energy systems. We set back from all property lines a minimum distance equal to the height of the system or the setback of the zone, whichever results in a greater setback. Now, that made a lot of sense to me, and so I would suggest we write that into the telecommunications facilities in, for residential zones. And so that's why there's adding the second sentence in C one A is my suggestion. Cause the height of the system really has to do with the need for a setback for several reasons. The wind causes a fracture and everything else, and just from the, the aesthetics of having to look up at this thing, that's, I, I think this is a good.
I, I agree with that. Hector, how do you feel about that?
I agree. Playing a little one-way, one-way game.
Yeah. Okay, C three C on page one fifty-nine, do you have something in between?
I'm trying to read my, I have just a random list of things I wanna look at, which I think we're gonna get to each of them anyway, so. Like distances to residences, do we, we want to have something not just a setback to a boundary, but should that tower be set back a minimum distance from any residence?
Well, that, that was a part of what My Valley Springs suggested and I, I thought that this the setback provision I just provided or suggested.
Protects the neighbors.
Yeah.
But not a house on the same property.
Well, the house on the same property is responsible for it.
Yeah, yeah, so that.
Yeah.
And then, I, oh, sound mitigations, fire risks, see, we're gonna get to all those things.
Well, don't go, don't go past your, your idea first, cause you're right, what if it's a rental property, right? And the, the, you know, the person who's in charge of the antenna really doesn't care about the tenants so much, so. I think for safety purposes, you would want some sort of setback from the, from the, from the residents, if there's a residence there.
I, I guess I figured, well, of course, the way I look at it, those people have sold their soul, the owners have sold their soul to this telecommunications.
No, but what if the, what if the owner, what if the occupant of the house isn't the owner of the system? What if, what if it's a rental house, like that, some Bay Area owner has a home up here and they, they've sold it for an antenna, the backyard for an antenna and the house for, they rent it out. And so you have a sort of person who, because if we don't have a lot of rentals, has to live somewhere. So they end up living under a tower, um, that, you know, so I think your idea for a setback from, I really support Michelle's idea of setback from residents.
Well, what does My Valley Springs suggest in front of you?
I really have to organize this better.
Yeah, I can put them in my mind here. It suggests a minimum one hundred and fifty feet from any existing residential building onsite or on adjacent properties. That would certainly cover it. As a, as a separate provision. So you'd have the, the setback sentence that I suggested that the others concurred in, and then you could have a second sentence saying, providing that there'd be a minimum of one hundred and fifty feet from any existing residential buildings onsite or on adjacent properties. Now, we probably should specify what we mean, where we're measuring this from, the center of the facility, the edge of the facility, whatever. But anyhow, you could add a second sentence to the, it would be a third sentence to C one A about setback from residents.
Be a minimum distance to onsite residences.
Onsite or whatever.
Well, they're already gonna be.
They should be protected by the southern.
By the other one, right, so I think we, you'd wanna separate those things and not layer it on.
Yeah.
I don't know what a reasonable distance is, I mean, there's.
The height of the tower?
You could have all those same concerns, but is it, should we be? I guess it's only to residences, single or multifamily residences.
It's too crazy to take anybody.
By the height of the tower?
Have the thing in for that.
A distance equal to the height of the tower?
Setback's gonna be at least the height.
Yeah.
Right.
So then I think it's, it's an additional consideration of, well, really, if you have a ninety-foot tower and you have a ninety-foot setback, unless the building next door is, I mean, it's, building next door is gonna be protected. I think what we're mainly concerned now about is the residential building onsite.
So is that then gonna limit future structures, the location of future structures on that parcel?
Yeah, that's a very good question.
So the house goes in, you know it's there, and then the tower comes in and they set the tower back and then three, four years down the road, they wanna build a barn. Are they gonna be able to build the barn?
I, I think.
Or maybe a detached garage, I mean, if you wanna refer to it as a residential structure.
Existing residential structure.
I don't think we prevent the owner of the property on which the tower is located.
What if that, what if that secondary subsequent structure happens to be an accessory dwelling unit?
I guess I've reached a point where maybe we don't have to think of everything.
Well, I'm just thinking, if it's important enough to include it.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, it's a good point.
You know what I'm saying?
I agree with Gina, the importance here is that we don't have a tower blow down and hit a residential structure, whether it's the primary residential structure or a secondary residential structure, doesn't really matter. That's the same reason we have the setbacks for the wind generating things, cause a lot of times those windmills will throw, throw a blade and you don't want it to hit a house or anywhere anybody's living.
But what we're.
If they wanna put their, if they wanna put their car in a barn or a garage somewhere and take the risk, that's, you know, we can let them take the risk. But we don't want anybody, you know, dying because of these things.
Seems to me then, what we're talking about really is a restriction on the building of additional residential structures within such, so many.
That's what I'm asking, so I mean, if we're gonna.
It's not a restriction on how you can build this tower because.
Right, they just have to understand that when they allow this, they also preclude some things in the future, but not accessory structures like barns.
Outbuildings and.
Right.
Yeah.
Residential structure.
I would say instead of saying a hundred and fifty feet, though, I would say the height of the tower.
Okay.
Or, you know.
Well, I mean, as far as the adjacent, adjacent properties, we've got the height of the tower and then our own setback.
Exactly.
So I mean, we're concerned about the high wind, fire.
I think when it's on your own property and you're allowing it, you're accepting some of that responsibility.
You're back to my, my mindset.
Maybe we're not going to.
Well, are we gonna prevent rentals of these facilities then, cause I'm concerned that, you know what the rental market's like? People will live, have to, people will live anywhere they can get. And I don't think people should have to live under the threat of a tower falling on.
I'm not done. My comment, I, I was saying, so if you did it the, the height of the tower, then I think you would not allow any multi unit residential future stuff to be built closer to the tower.
Right.
But maybe a single-family residence and A D U, you have to leave that up to them. I, I am sensitive to what Tom is saying, I think if you're living in an apartment building or four-plex, yeah, you're at the mercy of your landlord, allowing somebody to do something, but on a single-family residence, yes, that could be the situation that somebody is renting it. I, I just think there's a point at which we can't prevent everything. And we also have to be, to recognize that cell phone towers are gonna have to go somewhere, we'd prefer they not be in residential areas in the first place, but they do, in some cases, that's the only locations that are going to be available to them.
We have to keep in mind too that we don't wanna put so much restrictions on this that it looks as if we're trying to ban cell towers in residential areas.
Right.
Cause the feds wouldn't like that.
So what do we feel is a reasonable?
If you wanna make it the height of the tower, at least for.
Which it could be more than a hundred and fifty feet if the tower is super tall.
Well, that's true.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
So.
Another, add another sentence about in residential zones, right, that the, that the tower will not be within the height of the tower.
From an existing residence.
Center of the tower, do we wanna say, and this is.
Yeah, I mean, I'm okay with the center of the tower, that's a given number.
Okay.
Very, no argument about what that.
Yeah. Although when we, what the language we've already agreed on, we're saying facilities shall be setback and I, I was assuming that would include any facility, the, the facility includes the the enclosed area that has the generators and the other equipment and this sort of thing, so.
I, I would argue for using the center, which is such a set number and then, I think most of them seem about forty by forty, so.
Okay. Okay, so we wanna put that in this sentence that we already just got.
If we're gonna. That's different than what I'm reading. Okay.
Residential areas, facilities shall be setback.
Do we wanna say something like measurements shall be taken from the center of the tower?
That's, we could, we could say that after we add the other, the next sentence about in no case shall any residential building be within the, within the height of the tower and the, or height of the facility and measurements for this subsection shall be made from the center of the tower. Center of the facility. You with us, Martha?
Yeah, did that make sense to everybody?
I think so, we can draft something and then make sure we got it.
Okay, great. Then my next thing is on one fifty-nine. Since sometimes it can be, uh, an administrative use permit. Seems to me we wanna just, uh, freestanding facilities, the maximum height of the freestanding facilities shall be established as part of the use permit approval.
I'm sorry, where are you?
Just take conditional, the word conditional, out of, under, C there near the top of one fifty-nine, freestanding facility.
The use permit approval.
Yeah.
Since sometimes it's an AUP.
Sometimes it's an AUP. And none, none of it is permitted by rights, so.
Right.
Then the next paragraph for design and screening. Uh, maybe this is something we might come up against the feds on, uh, but I'm suggesting that we, in the last line of that paragraph, we put and noise between visual and impact, so we're talking about so as to reduce visual and noise impacts to the extent feasible.
And vibration.
And vibration, that's right. So visible noise and vibration?
Why not?
Okay. Then, and maybe I'm, I'm off base on this, uh, four C under design and screening. So I, I read C as saying, well, if you've got an antenna that adds thirty feet to the height of a building, uh, you have to make a, a fake building tower to hide that antenna. And again, my, my thoughts are sometimes an antenna by itself is a lot better than the alternative. So I was suggesting we either, with a camouflage design, we either delete that or we redraft it somehow. So you don't have these strange faults, tops to buildings that are covering an antenna. If you were gonna put an antenna on top of the, uh, Parthenon, I think I'd rather have the antenna than having a, a mini Parthenon fourth floor.
Yeah, I might say something like telecommunications facilities that are mounted on buildings or structures shall be located to minimize their visual impact or something like that, not require them to build a tower around them.
That sounds good to me.
And I, I could leave the wording to Martha.
I think there's a song here somewhere.
Yeah. Leave it, tell Martha. I mean, she's seen a whole lot more zoning codes recently than we have, probably.
Then, the, next suggestion I have is, um, in the next sub-paragraph. We're, we're concerned on generators and associated equipment and such. We wanna have their sound dampened as well as, uh, that they be screened from view. That's why I'm making the suggestion that we say, uh, equipment cabinets, although, excuse me, otherwise, equipment cabinets in buildings and associated equipment such as air conditioning units and emergency gener, generators shall have their sound dampened and shall be screened from view by a wall and/or landscaping.
Yeah. I think that's, that works for me, does that work for you?
The one thing that bothers me about that is the landscaping really doesn't dampen the sound.
Well, the sound dampening might require a block wall, something like that, so some other feature.
Well, then, how about and/or landscaping?
It's all, yes, and/or landscaping. And I think it's gonna depend on its location and the situation where it's located exactly.
Okay. Then, right at the topping, at the top of the next page, landscaping. Landscaping shall be provided for and maintained to screen any ground structures or equipment visible from a public right-of-way. And then, and/or from any existing private adjacent residence or business is what I was suggesting.
Or just, or adjacent property. Doesn't matter what it's residential or commercial, right?
Okay, just, even if we're talking rural properties, I mean, you know, if we're, we're talking about the top of a quarry.
Well, right, I think.
That's why I'm, that's why I'm saying residences or businesses.
Or, and as specified in the use permit.
Okay, that would be fine with me.
That's the reason for a use permit is to make it specific, right?
Yeah.
And I just, it, it could be and would be as specified in the use permit. I wouldn't put that statement again, in, again, cause I wouldn't tie it to just one. I mean, that's a universally applicable thing, I wouldn't tie it to one specific line or one comment. But what you said, are saying is correct.
Okay.
Okay, um, C five, B. This was suggested by, uh, at least some of this was suggested by, uh, My Valley Springs. Landscaping shall be irrigated and maintained for the life of the facility. Site facilities shall be maintained in good working order and good appearance, free from debris, including parts broken off from any part of the facility. I have in mind of, of photographs that, uh, My Valley Springs provided when we were looking at the last cell tower that just showed a bunch of the, the fake limbs had fallen around. So that, anyhow, that's the suggestion is by requiring landscaping, it's only reasonable to require that it be irrigated. Is it unreasonable to ask them to irrigate landscaping?
So isn't it possible, though?
I think we start with any landscaping, this one, say, any landscaping shall be irrigated. So that if landscaping is required.
You may not need landscaping, right? Okay.
Okay, so I'd add any to what I was suggesting.
I, I think we could just say free from graffiti and debris and not go into a whole description of where the debris came from or, they just need to keep it clean. Period, doesn't matter.
I agree with you in principle, I was just being very specific, seeing the volatile pictures.
Yeah.
Free from graffiti or debris, and debris. Okay?
Hector, how do you feel?
Okay, C seven.
I actually might want to say under maintenance also, they shall be responsible for maintaining any stealth facilities in good condition. And the site facilities free from graffiti and debris. That way, if there was something where the branches weren't falling off or they could be responsible for maintaining those, that's a reasonable expectation.
Okay, so.
Did, I'm sorry, Martha, I'm babbling.
Did you get that?
You thought that?
Well, I thought I got it until I started reading the sentence again. So first I have, any landscaping shall be irrigated and maintained for the life of the facility. Then stealth facilities shall be maintained in good working order and good.
Site facilities, including.
Under maintenance, just the permittee shall be responsible for maintaining any stealth facilities in good condition and maintaining the site and facilities free from graffiti and debris. That can be a two sentences or whatever you need to get all those thoughts in there.
So the, yeah, you're dealing with a sentence that's already in the draft.
Right, I'm just using the maintenance section to address both those things. If you think it should be two pieces, that's, that might be better. Yeah, now I lost myself somewhere.
Okay, well, my next suggestion is C seven A, but that deals with co-location. Oh, yeah, this is one I, I had. A question with as the way it appeared in here, uh, in the draft, it says that the last sentence of this, uh, C seven A is the, the director may review any information submitted by applicant and permittees in determining whether good faith has been exercised. I wasn't sure how that, I guess we would have to say in, in, I don't know. And how is that, how is, what's the director's jurisdiction? And here's the authorization, what he's gonna, what about his?
Right.
Conclusions and how are they reviewed and all that stuff?
It, it's really not up to the director, truthfully. I mean, this is really, um, because there are exceptions under state and federal regulations. This is really about the providers giving the director information more than the director making an actual action on it.
Ah, okay, cause that, that was, that was the question I had going in and I, I, I just carried it on to my suggestion that, uh, their last sentence be the applicant and/or the permittee shall submit information and the director shall review to make a determination as to whether good faith has been exercised and whether the requirements of subsection so-and-so have been satisfied. So what you're saying is really what we're asking is that they submit information.
Showing that they tried to co-locate.
Yeah.
Or in thi, in this instance, this is not about trying to co-locate. This is about people having to, um, allow others to.
Provide for future co-locations.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So exactly, if they're saying, well, we can't, the director can say, well, show us that information. But it's not relevant to the director to decide.
But then the director really doesn't have jurisdiction to do anything about it.
Or the expertise necessarily to evaluate the.
Right, it's, yeah.
So I mean, if that's, if that was the limitation on, on what you were providing in the last sentence, as you suggested it, we can, we can just.
We're okay with co-location.
Yeah. But, but you're still in that, in the sentence that you were suggesting it, you do have the director determining whether good faith has been exercised, so.
Yeah, I'm.
And the director may require the applicant to obtain a third-party study at the applicant's expense. So it does give the director a little bit of power to, to check up on somebody that they feel is not being completely forthright.
Where, where is that?
Um, page one sixty-one, the top.
May require, okay. Okay, so that's what the director, maybe, maybe we have, maybe we put the, uh, if we say the director shall review any information submitted by applicant and may require the applicant to obtain third-party technical study. Judge, we reverse the order of this, since it gives.
In a perfect world, but I don't know that I feel strongly about, the information's all there. In a perfect world, you reverse the last two sentences, but who, yeah.
There's the other thing, let's see.
It might make sense in some cases to be this order.
Let's see.
I just, I don't see an, an issue with.
I think the less fiddling, the more, the better, cause we might actually confuse things further.
Yeah, and then I was putting in a reference in this part, uh, back to seventeen point two, five point two, one, O B one, which, uh, again, deals with co-location and we.
So that cross-referencing, that's incorrect.
Is what?
That would be incorrect. So the first one is about, um, is that co-located facilities are exempt so that the county can't require a permit if Verizon's gonna co-locate on T-Mobile. And then this portion on co-locating is saying that, uh, T-Mobile, T-Mobile must allow Verizon. Like there are two kinds of co-location.
Well, I would.
They don't cross-pollinate.
In B one, then, where it says, provided the modification of existing tower-based station that does not substantially change the physical dimensions, and we added, no, we didn't, uh, physical dimensions of such tower or base station. I mean, who's, who's making the determination of the, provided that?
We don't have any, we, eh, we just don't have much say about that.
Well, no, I mean, it just, I did, just, uh, provided.
So if it really, so if it really became a problem, the director would be like, hey, you should be co-located or like, it's, it's kinda part of the package, right? We, you know, show us that you've looked at other sites, have you co-located? But it's really kinda not, if, when like kinda push comes to shove, it's not really about the director's determination, right? It's about federal and state regulations.
Okay, um, if, then I guess I'm really back to the, the last line of what you're suggesting in, uh, seven A. Uh, director shall review any information submitted by applicant in determining whether good faith has been exercised. Uh, director shall review any information submitted by applicant in determining whether good faith has been exercised. Again, I don't know if he determines that what, he or she determines that what, so what? What, what's the result?
Denial of the permit.
Right.
Really?
That's what it says. Failure to comply with co-location requirements when feasible or cooperating good faith as provided for in this section shall result in denial of a permit request or revocation of an existing permit.
Okay.
I think that covers it.
Good job!
Okay. Now, I was suggesting that we add technologically before the word feasible there, just because.
My understanding is that we can't limit it that way.
With co-location?
Right.
Okay, if we can, whether the tower's built or not, we can look whether it's technologically feasible, because that's what the Ninth Circuit provides.
We have a definition of feasibility, but we can't just limit it to saying technologically feasible and you can't look at any other issues. If it's technologically feasible, you have to do it. Because there could be other reasons that, you know, it costs twenty-five times as much and, or it has impacts above and beyond that are problematic.
But then how about using it down in D one C? The, the proposed site would result in fewer or less severe environmental impacts than any.
Yeah, it's fine.
Than technologically?
So I would caution about that, too, because these are findings you need to make. And what if another site does have less severe environmental impacts and it is technologically feasible, but the property owner won't let you step foot on their property?
Right.
He doesn't agree to it, then you can't make that finding.
Well.
Because it is technologically feasible.
I see, yeah, because I'm, I'm drawing the distinction between technologically feasible and economically feasible. And I suppose we could say reasonably feasible.
I, I think we probably should leave it as it is.
Leave it as it is?
Yeah, we're, we've added a lot of
Well, I'd.
hardrails here in an attempt to.
But the Ninth Circuit gives us this handle. Uh, and use, and says, uh, when you're looking at alternative sites, if they're technologically feasible, the implication was, then they are feasible.
Within, within reason.
Within, no, you're right, it is within reason, but it's, it's, uh, this is one area where the Ninth Circuit has given us an advantage, and I'd like to claim it.
So I, you know, I, the other thing that I mentioned is just requiring a really robust alternative study. That's, that's the thing I really want to see as part of their application. And I think that would do the same thing. So you're looking at all of those items.
Yeah.
And they're providing us that information, not easily discounting sites.
Right, you're absolutely right.
And that robust alternatives would include the co-location issues, whether or not the properties are really available and what the environmental concerns are associated with those properties. So I don't know how, I had mentioned that to Julie at one point, and she said she could help us write something that does require a very robust alternative study.
Well, maybe.
Because I can't write it.
Maybe you and Julie could get together about that.
Well, I think we could just say we'd like her to take a look at that before we're done with this and see what kind of things she feels are defensible that we could include in here. So if you guys are in agreement.
I, I surely am. I think that's a, a good approach to the problem, because that's what we were encountering this last time. I don't know exactly, that would be in the required finding figure.
Well, it would be what they're required as part of their application, right?
Well, that's.
And then the findings would flow from that, yeah.
Okay, did we have particular provision for the application?
I don't think so. But it mentions.
Would, would you raise that with Julie?
I will.
Okay.
Permit requirements. Well, maybe that's. Maybe that would be where.
What we have, I think the permit requirements is is where that falls and then reflective in the findings.
Okay, is. Is there anything more in this section that anybody wants to bring up?
Yeah, but I, I think that's a good, a good conversation. Even if you didn't take either one of my voices.
I think you've substantially improved this section.
Good.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much. And thank you for taking so much consideration to the comments of My Valley Springs.
Yes. Well, they're very valuable. Okay, since we're right here, you want to do small?
Yes.
Nonprofit fundraising. No, I was going, the fundraising activity.
Right, it's a temporary use.
Oh, okay, sure, yeah. Julie.
Of course, I have a fine, fine spot. Here we are.
Julie provided a.
Yes, right here. Small nonprofit fundraising activities.
Yeah.
I, I was.
Go ahead.
Mostly happy with the general idea of this.
Me, too. I, I think the title, it'd be better to say, small fundraising activities by nonprofit organizations.
Yeah.
Because this sounds like. And then the only other change I would make would be in the list of the examples at the end, then cooking and bake sale stands, manual car wash, fundraisers, I would add, drive-through food sales.
Yeah.
Central fire has a habit of doing those.
And Gina and Martha, do you guys have any concerns about this wording? Okay.
Hey.
And then it's enforcement, right?
Sure can be.
Next section. Hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on. I gotta make a note. So my, my plan is to try to get us out of here by about three thirty today, so we don't exhaust everybody, is that? It's exhausting enough.
A good plan. Okay. Two twenty-six is what I have as a page for enforcement. And Julie has come.
New section here.
Yeah, and.
I'm sorry, what are we?
Yeah.
Chapter seventeen point four one is that enforcement section.
Okay.
Was missing like a little section of it when we reviewed it before.
Then Julie, see, find, yeah.
In the stuff that Gina handed us this morning, it was toward the back of it.
Right. And I, I think it's great, that was sad.
Yeah, I think it's just fine how it is.
Yep, how it is as she's suggested. Yeah.
Yes, you had some additional findings there.
Which I guess we're in, we're there, but not the way it ended up. Yep, hey, check that one.
Okay.
You, you happy with this?
Yeah.
And then we have the sexually oriented business section seventeen four two oh three oh.
Okay, so.
Know what that page number is.
Page two forty is what I have. And I think.
It's been replaced in its entirety with this.
But that's, see, I've just put it in my binder, so. So that, I think we have as a part of today's, yeah, here we go. This, this is what you're looking for. And that, I think it's extremely important to stress the purpose of that once. I'm gonna define, I'm gonna read the whole purpose paragraph. Purpose of defining and regulating sexually oriented businesses as a distinct use classification is to prevent community-wide adverse secondary effects that can be generated by the unregulated operation of sexually oriented businesses. These adverse secondary effects include, but are not, but are not limited to depreciation of property values, increased vacancy rates in residential and commercial areas, increased criminal activity, increased litter, noise, and vandalism, and interference with the enjoyment of residential property in the vicinity of such businesses. Now, that is our purpose of this, of this regulation, of the, of this chapter. And I think the way it's spelled out in, in the version that, that Julie has presented is fully acceptable to me. And on the basis of that purpose, I would suggest we adapt.
Yeah, I think there's so many limitations on the way it has to be done that this is a good solution.
That's three.
Okay, then we'll just move on. Okay, well, now it's only two thirty.
Yeah, I know.
So we have these items coming back to, I think we could have a first look at, if I can find. So, so we tackled all of the, yeah, other than the few that we set aside to come back to. Okay. So I did have some thoughts on the dark sky.
Oh, yeah.
Stuff, I just can't find it in my stack.
Did you lose it?
Send them to Gina, just to give her a heads up, but I, and I know they're.
And you told me not to print it.
I, well, I said you didn't need to, I didn't, I mean, it's not like a finished thing ready to go. I just thought, I identified the things I thought we should discuss and decide whether or not they should be modified in that way, but my gosh. Let me see if I have it here.
It's, it's under lighting on page eighty-nine, and this has been. And we're doing it.
Lighting and illumination, right here. I really want that, now I've lost the agenda of it.
What chapter is that?
Seventeen oh one dot oh one zero.
Wait a minute, seventeen point one six one zero zero.
Came from Gina, this number on it.
Oh.
So let's see if that match, maybe it doesn't match the.
Automatic numbering, so Michelle, your numbering is incorrect.
Okay.
So in, in our binder, it's seventeen point one six point one zero zero.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's okay. It's the same item.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we're discussing it and then.
Yeah, let's discuss it and I'll tell you the, the parts, the suggestions I have and you can see if you agree or have additional ones. So you can get the get open in front of us.
Page eighty-nine?
What was that page?
Page eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine, great.
Could we take a ten-minute break?
Sure.
Could we take a ten-minute break?
Sure, let's take a ten-minute break. And then I can find my agenda again.
Oh, good, glad you said.
Okay, we are back from our break and getting started on the lighting and illumination review, which is seventeen point sixteen point one hundred in our packet on page eighty-nine. So I was generally okay with the, the purpose and applicability, but I thought we needed to take another look at some of the exemptions. And, and my goal here was to get enough additional information in this section so that there wouldn't be a lot of pressure to create a whole dark sky ordinance. And as background, I did do some reading up, and even the dark skies illumination society people are, no longer have a suggested ordinance template because so many things have been incorporated into the building codes, particularly into California's energy code. So that's just a preface to everything is. So I, I don't think it's gonna take that much more to get us to a point that we'll do most of what we want to do. So I was just gonna change item A from public and private street lighting to existing public and private street lighting and say, all other street lighting shall be shielded, cut off, and designed to eliminate only the roadway, walkways, parking lots, and other required facilities without encroaching onto adjacent properties or illuminating the night sky.
That's beautiful.
Well.
You're saying, you are saying illuminating, not eliminating.
Illuminate.
So is all other street lighting then also exempt as long as it is shielded, cut off, and designed in this way?
Well, once it's, once all of that is done, it's not exempt. I mean, it's, it's following the requirements.
Then you shouldn't say anything here.
Okay, well, then we, then we're gonna have to put, move that into a street lighting section.
Yeah.
Well, and we don't regulate street lighting in the zoning code, so actually, you do regulate street lighting in the zoning code going into private subdivisions and onto county roads. And anything that PG&E installs, which is our situation here much of the time, is already meeting these requirements.
So. So I, okay.
I, I.
I think then we need to kind of back up and as we go through, because there's already a requirement, a base requirement for lighting to be shielded. Or full cutoff. So then that wouldn't be a street lighting one, right?
Well, I mean, we can't just have exempt public and private street lighting, or those provisions aren't gonna apply.
Right, so that's just what I'm saying, is, is I think the way the, this is drafted, it's problematic in its interpretation. So first, exempting existing public and private street lighting doesn't need to be said because the whole applicability of this section is to new or replaced
Right.
outdoor lighting fixtures, so it doesn't apply to existing.
So that, that would be fine, to just get rid of that exemption.
Yeah.
Okay. So then.
And that kind of went through the whole thing because it says it applies to all new or replaced outdoor light fixtures or systems unless specifically exempted. But I still folded in new or replaced when I said something. Mostly because I was trying to fit it into the, that format we already had. But I, I'm fine with just taking out that exemption. Because it it's existing, it's already exempt.
Right. And so then, as far as for new street lighting, I think as we go through the rest of the general requirements, then we identify, you know, is this appropriate to apply to street lighting? And then if there's anything additional, or if there's anything in there that you don't want to apply to. or if there's anything in there that you don't want to apply to street lighting. So that's kind of the exercise that needs to go through.
I, I figured this is what you were gonna say. So it's sort of the same thing with athletic field lights.
Right.
I think athletic field lights used within a public school campus or state park have to be exempt because we don't have any say over that.
Well, we might, we, we have no say over that if the school district has taken certain steps.
I, schools, schools are exempt from local.
Well, I thought of the, my bit of research was that they, they need to take a certain step to be exempt from county regulation.
They don't even, are not even required to get permits through the county.
No, I know. If they've done what they, they need to take legislative action. Well, that's.
At least not in my experience. I haven't done schoolwork in a long time, but.
Okay, well, hang on.
There are certain things that do require, and it has to do with encroachments and things like that.
Well, no, but.
Doesn't the, the state architect would then review?
Does the building code issue?
Just a building code issue and that's it?
There, there are certain things that locals can't have.
But this, doesn't the building code then somewhat regulate?
Well, anyhow, that any, any school district worth its salt would have taken the step that I think exists. And so exempting them.
Yeah.
Is. Might as well exempt them.
Right.
Okay, but not, not general exemption for, I mean, I, I think limiting, limiting the exemption, as you say, is.
Right, then I think we take the rest of it, which that talks about what should happen in a, for athletic field lighting and just put it in the requirements because, and I looked at how other places did it. They had separate sections for street lighting, athletic field lighting with those requirements. So they wouldn't be in the exemption because they're a requirement.
So in the, in the general requirements then of this section.
We're gonna.
Okay.
Yeah, I was just, let's just finish the exemption. So I, the temporary seasonal lighting, I just was questioning, do we want to try to put any guardrails on that or just say, it's not a problem, it's exempt?
I hesitate to be the Grinch.
Me too.
I'm not gonna step in.
Yeah.
Come from miles around to watch some, look at some.
Yeah, exactly, so I, I feel like it's okay how it is.
Don't we have?
I have a question with you though.
Okay, what?
A question with you. The timeframe while we're talking about construction might last.
On D?
Yes.
D. Construction and emergency lighting?
Right.
So I understand emergency lighting, duration of the emergency. But construction can last a long time. So are there any guardrails on time?
I think that that's like when they're doing construction work in the roadway at night or the, you know, gets dark early and they have construction money. It's all only on when it's absolutely necessary. I mean, that's how I read that.
So I'm looking at a building.
Yeah, building construction.
So I understand, you know, the road kind of thing.
Are they gonna, are they gonna leave the lights on all night because they're working on this corner of the building for some reason?
Well, they're not, I mean, they're. But they might, but I think under safety lighting, they might feel they need to have it because you wouldn't want a kid to impale themselves on something, that kind of thing. I think the vast majority of construction sites are gonna be, if they're big enough to have these sorts of issues, are gonna be fenced and secured anyway. But I think that's what you're thinking of when you wrote this. It's just, there could be reasons that a construction site, they could be working at night and could have lit up. Martha's thinking.
I guess maybe, you know, it's like, security lighting is a separate thing.
Right.
And so, and maybe we can fine tune a bit of the, on construction and emergency lighting. Providing they're temporary, discontinued or, or paused when the construction work, I'm, I'm not coming up. The, the concept is, if you're not working on the building, you can't have construction lighting. If it's overnight, if it's whatever, security lighting, something else. You might need a lot more lighting for construction work on a building than you would just to keep it secure from gunfire.
Right.
So I, I, I don't immediately come up with a language, but this, this sounds as if when the construction's all done, you don't need construction lights anymore.
Right.
And what I'm thinking of is when you're not actually working on the building, you don't need construction lights. But provide, yeah.
I don't think people leave the light, like. Is this an issue? Like, I don't think people leave, where there's a construction site, I don't leave the, believe they leave the lights on when they're not doing construction.
I think that the only, the only reason they would do it would be for security purposes. And for that, they probably need less lights than they do for somebody who's actually working on a building, is it?
Because why aren't we writing something for something people don't do?
You answered my question.
Yeah.
That was the answer.
Okay.
Okay, underwater lights, temporary lighting, everybody okay with those? Or you guys have any?
Well, it's underwater, oh, underwater, yeah. I haven't looked at this for a while. No, from? Okay, so we got the general.
So if you look at prohibitions.
Yeah.
I added three things. Or proposed adding three things. And modifying searchlights to include laser lights for advertising purposes now that laser lights are everywhere. So and then the third item that I proposed was low-pressure sodium lights are prohibited in residential zones in those areas designated historic and community center in the general plan. They're just not very pretty. They are super energy efficient. So you don't wanna prohibit them entirely. And then I added blinking, flashing, moving, revolving, flickering, color-changing, blah, 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 vibrating lights, you know, separately or in conjunction with a sign. So is that, see any issue with that?
Sounds good to me.
And then this one I stole from other places that seem to have it. Any lights operate in such a manner as to constitute a hazard or danger to persons or vehicular travel, create glare visible from off-site, encroach unneighboring properties, or directly light the night sky.
I think that's great to have in there. And then when we get to the general requirements, I will be taking care of a lot of those concerns, but I think it's good to have it.
The general requirements are really just shield on people on your own property.
Yeah.
That's really all it is. So I didn't mess with the light levels at property lines. I assumed those were pretty standard.
Sorry, can I back up a little bit? So I guess I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't necess, I wouldn't recommend necessarily putting number five in. Again, what you're saying is any lights that aren't, you know, don't comply with this section, which again, that's kind of, it's like saying something that universally applies in slightly different manner. So then everybody goes, well, it says some, it's written differently. What is, what was that supposed to mean? What was it supposed to get at? So if there's something that's missing from the section that you wanna prevent, then we should address that. But having this kind of redundant, but written differently data that if you don't follow these rules, you're prohibited is just from a drafting point of view not great.
So you're saying because, that any lights one, that because it's about the way they're being used rather than the light itself? Don't.
But already you, you have, you can't create a glare. You can't encroach unneighboring properties that directly light the night sky, it's already having it shielded or full cutoff.
I, I'd, I'd see your point, I'd see your point.
See your point too.
But, but it, it was music to my ears when, when Michelle was reading it. And then I think this is what people are gonna be looking for in, in this chapter.
Yeah, it's just hard. And what, if what people are looking for is feel-good statements, that's not a zoning code.
I know.
Well, maybe.
You know, you could have like a handout or hey, look what, look what this effectually does. And again, you can certainly put this in there, like, is it gonna break the county now? But I'm just trying to keep things clean and remembering that zoning is a regulatory document.
How about if we put it in, up into purpose?
Well, it's kind of in the purpose, but not more obliquely.
Well, yeah, but I'm, what I'm saying is make the purpose more detailed. That this is what we're after. That, that would give the feel-good part of it. That people would say, oh, they're trying to do this and they could look to the specific regulations and, and see that they do satisfy those concerns. But it is, I think what you, what you read was, was.
Well, I think we can take those and work them into these other sections. I mean, I think we can. I think Tim likes it, it's a flat-out prohibition, not relying on what it's, the sections that are telling you what the general requirements are. So, but I, I don't care what section it's in. I just think we need to be really clear what we're telling people.
Yeah, but I, I think that, we could achieve that by putting a lot of what that provision was up into the purpose. Because then, then we know, then, okay, this is what we're trying to do. And we're not being redundant because this is what we're trying to do. And then we look down here to the section and this is how we're doing it.
It's, it's in there somewhat, I think. I would be happy to do that, to try and minimize anything that's duplicative or just the inverse or reverse of something that we're already saying.
Okay.
Public comment?
Yeah.
I just wanna make sure I understand this right. So normally, blinking and flashing lights would be prohibited, but during temporary seasonal lighting, that's exempt from the prohibition. So during Christmas time, you can have blinking lights. Not outside of Christmas time, you wouldn't have blinking lights.
That's how I understood it.
Everybody interpreted that?
We're thinking of the blinking Christmas lights as something that's not sixty watts or higher.
Right, got it.
So then as you move into the general requirement, so the addition in, in shielding to entirely prevent light trespass to adjacent properties is contradictory to what's under number one, which has some allowance for that light level at your property line.
I didn't put that in, that was in here.
I know, but so adding, so the light, the maximum light level at property lines was in there. And so the maximum light level is at your property line. So that's kind of where you're gonna see light crossover, right? Is, is point one foot candles. But in a commercial or industrial zone with different kind of light, kind of lighting characteristics, it's a little bit more, it's point two five. So then in shielding, things are, lights are required to be shielded. And then you added.
Right.
Uh, shielding.
Shielded to entirely prevent light trespass onto adjacent properties. So that would mean your property, your light level at your property line would have to be zero foot candles.
But before we get into that, I know.
I think there's two issues. Go ahead.
Yeah, the, the shielding, all outdoor light fixtures shall be, and I think we do wanna say fully shielded. Do we wanna also say, or fully cut off? Except as provided, I think, I think that's, I know when we first looked at this, why I, I misunderstood or did not know what fully shielded means, but I think it should be in there. And the, I like, I guess, I like the sentence that, that we have for shielding the way it was originally, originally said. Shall be fully shielded or fully cut off, except as provided below. Then.
So here's what I see as the actual problem or the complaints that I hear. So we're, we do require light to not directly shine onto an adjacent property. Entirely, absolutely shielded, cut off, so it doesn't go onto an, to an adjacent piece of property. However, you can still see the effect of that light from an adjacent property. You know, you still see that there's light over there, right? Even if it's not directly shining onto your property. And I ha, hear complaints all the time about people that, but I can see their lights, I don't like it. Saying, well.
And see their lit buildings and see.
I can see their lit building. And so there's, there is some visible light from that. That's what I was thinking the light at the property line was actually addressing. And that the shielding and cutoff is that if you do that cone of light, it's not extending onto the neighbor's property.
Yeah, I, I.
So, so there. And I don't know what the right, I'm just looking at what other places did and said. So I also don't think you wanna say that everything will be fully shielded. And they do have some exceptions here that I thought were, were good.
I was, I was just saying the lead-in and then except as provided below. But I think the lead-in, start off with the idea it's gonna be fully shielded or fully cut off. Now, it's been a, a month since I looked at this, so, but.
And I added it because it said sufficiently shielded, but it didn't say sufficiently shielded to accomplish what?
No, that's, that's, I, I think sufficiently was in there because I said, well, you can't have it fully shielded and there's no light coming out. I just was ignorant. So that's why I'm going back to the original.
Well, that would be okay to say fully shielded or fully cut off. Except what does fully shielded?
Well, as I recall.
But you, the, the purpose of the shield creates a different cone of light. So you're still not saying what you're trying to accomplish with fully shielded.
Because what you're accom, so what you're accomplishing through the fully shielded or fully cut off is that light is cast downward.
Right.
So what the shield does is it cuts off the ability for the light to come up.
Yeah.
And the full cutoff is where the luminary is actually within the shield. So you can't see like a, a bulb at all. So that's for the light fixture and that's for that angling of the light and the direction of the light. And then you pair that with the maximum level at the property line. So you can't put your light at the property line and equally have it, you know, you can't light somebody else's property. We do typically allow for sunlight trespass, again, in limited amounts because we know the nature of light, like it gets real hard to just.
Right.
You know, that margin of error to have absolutely no light coming off at the property line, particularly in commercial areas where you may have some, you know, things act as a district, right? Where it may make sense to have some light kind of shining over. Or in industrial areas. Uh, or an industrial area a little bit over the property line. Um, so there typically are allowances for that. I have seen many ordinances that take the hard line and have it at zero. I don't think those ordinances are actually followed or particularly reasonable to have. Have such strict limitations.
Well, as I, as I understand it, uh, from what Michelle was saying. That with the fully shielded and fully cut off, I mean, you have the cone of light. The cone itself would end at the property line or before. But the the reflected light, the radiant light, whatever.
Took a light meter there, you would still be reading.
Still have light, but the cone, the cone from that fixture. It ends at or before the property line, is that?
Ideally.
That's, yeah.
And I think what Mark is saying is, yeah, it it and it is harder and people change things and. I I understand all that. I I don't feel strongly. I just think when you say fully shielded or fully cut off, except as provided below. That that could be okay. We all understand that the intention, but I think they're really what people need to know is. Your light is not supposed to shine on your neighbor's property. I mean, we need to be as blatant as that and. And not be using terms like fully shielded, fully cut off.
Well, can you?
Without an explanation.
Can you, could you add so that all outdoor light fixtures shall be fully shielded or fully cut off? Uh, so as not to shine directly on uh neighboring property, except as provided.
Yeah, and maybe we need to title it something different, but number three glare prevention says. All lights shall be directed and oriented to prevent light spillover and glare onto adjacent properties.
And glares are completely kind of different animal. But it says no unobstructed beam or exterior light shall be directed off site. That's really the.
Yeah. That's what we're after.
Which doesn't really address glare, which is glare is that it's so light that when you look at it, you can't see.
Yeah, that that.
It's so bright.
That's more of the 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 power of the light, the wattage uh. That if even though the cone is ending before the property line, you could get glare. From lights that are more powerful than they need to be. The way I understand glare, I don't, I don't think, we don't define glare.
Right, it seems like a lot of the stuff under glare is really belongs under shielding. Or directional. Okay. I can take a, let me take a go at at simplifying this and not having overlapping. Requirements.
Great.
Or areas that might be hard to interpret what the.
Okay, let, while you're doing that, can I, can I? I ask a question, I guess, really. I I really didn't understand two C. Partially shielded light fixtures may be allowed. Provided the light source is obscured by translucent glass or other means. Light fixture does not exceed eight hundred and fifty lumens, light compliance will, I.
So you.
What are we, what are we talking?
Depressive porch light that is not shining on anybody's and it has glass around it. And so it does, so there's no glare because it's translucent or bubble glass or something. And it so it looks pretty and that's what people would like to have and it's, it's no problem because it's. It's under a roof or it's around the side. It's not shining directly onto anything.
That, that explains what we're.
And I was happy to see that there.
Yeah, uh, but. Now I understand what we're talking about. I'm not sure how, when we say may be allowed. What, who's who's making this decision?
Whoever's reviewing.
This is allowed, this isn't allowed?
Well, it's.
Well, it's, it's because, so because the first statement starts out with everything needs to be. Fully cut off and fully shielded, except as provided below. So the exception is you could have a partially shielded. You may have a partially shielded one, provided these things come with it.
No, I understand that and I just, but I I just may sound like.
It's permissive, it's permissive.
Yeah.
But then why isn't it is allowed?
She, she's saying that you may, she's, you may have this, not maybe we'll let you have this.
Well, may be allowed, sounds like sometimes it is and sometimes it isn't.
I, yeah, I think she's means you are, that that may in this context is intended to be permissive.
Then it's confusing.
We can change it to are.
Oh, yeah, are. Yeah, that would be.
Okay, and it certainly makes it clearer.
Maybe under the general requirements thing, we could have a first piece that says. Like you were talking about putting in the purpose that just says, this is the intent. We're gonna limit this encroachment on to other properties, but all of it, and then we can be more specific.
Well, I think it's, I think we avoid the the duplicative part if we put it in the purpose.
Well, I thought it might be better here actually and lead to the purpose as the purpose, but whatever, whichever. Okay.
I think you, I think you could add after general requirements, just an opening sentence. That says the intent of the following, blah, blah, blah.
Oh, good, great.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Cause I was.
And just take some of that overall stuff and put it in one sentence and then here's the specifics.
That's great, don't you think?
And now we reduce.
So can you include this statement, sentence, or at least the idea? Under number three, glare prevention, the last sentence, this is no obstructive beam. The exterior light shall be directed off site. Could you make that part of the general?
Right, that's, that's, I think what I was, I think that's what Mark was saying, what we were thinking.
Okay.
So under the timing controls, so we don't need all new and replaced, that outdoor lighting. In non-residential development shall be in time clock or photosynthesis. So all of this, these timing controls are covered by that energy code now. And they're very specific with non-residential. For rural areas, urban areas, semi-urban areas, parks. Areas with low background light levels. There's all sorts of information on automatic dimming. Many, many, many requirements that I think we should just rely on. And refer people to that. So all your new stuff needs to comply with the. Those, those codes and I put a state codes and regulations section in there.
I I think that's great.
And so maybe the whole timing controls could be simpler. I kind of got stuck putting them in two places and maybe they don't need to be there. Maybe the timing controls can be simpler and then we can refer all just to the state codes. Then there's a brand new one coming out, so. It's gonna have even more. I just glanced through it quickly to see what kind of stuff was in there and there's a lot. So.
So if we do, I mean, so we do have general statements that you have to comply with all applicable codes and regulations. And where there's a conflict, the more restrictive applies. If we have that, do we even need to say anything about the timing controls? Specifically knowing that those apply? And could we instead just have this section be on how you need to turn it off after business hours or when no one's on site?
Yeah, and that's exactly what's in the energy code. So that's what I.
Okay, so maybe we don't need to say it.
But I don't, but I still think it would be a good idea to have sort of a generic.
Yeah, I agree.
Something similar to what you had before, just for people who do not, don't know what the details of the codes are. And it would at least give them a general idea of this is the expectation, is that you're not gonna render lights all night. You know, when, or then they're not gonna be on all day when there's sun out. So. I just think we don't want to be too specific in there about how to accomplish it when there's already requirements.
Okay, were you gonna work on it? Sorry.
Well, I'm I'm trying to get from you whether. Uh, let me fool with it, but I think we need the state codes and regulations in this section specifically. Because there are such specific requirements, even for residential lighting.
Yeah, we don't, we don't want people to assume, oh, they've gone down through this list, they're okay. Uh, I think reference to the other regulations is is a good thing here. Um, without trying to detail.
Even residential lighting has to turn itself off.
And and with that, will you relook at paragraph number four? Cause just right now, at least what I'm looking at, it it seems kind of. It could maybe a little confusing, but so maybe you're looking at that altogether.
Yeah, so that's what I'm saying is maybe I can shorten up the timing.
Yeah.
Referring to the other one.
Yeah.
But give them enough of a hint of what those requirements would be. It's this only referred to non-residential and those codes. There are different for residential and non-residential, but there are codes for both.
Uh huh.
With the same sorts of requirements, it's just the non-resis are many layers of requirements. The residential is pretty simple and straightforward.
Somewhere in here, I think in the zoning code, we need to have a requirement that a qualified architect will be a member of this commission.
Yeah, I mean, I read the the non-residential lighting stuff and. By the time you read through it, you have to start over again because you lost track of what it was you were even trying to find out. It was, it's so complicated. And so I think the code required lighting, obviously, the Kelvin stuff seems fine to me. I, the sign lighting seems like we do need to figure out what it is that we're gonna allow. A lot of the sign lighting stuff that I looked at said that internally lit signs would not be allowed. Well, that makes no sense. I mean, of every strip center in the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, then it's, it's better light than.
Signs, yeah, so. You know, I just took a stab at throwing something in there.
Which we we haven't seen, right?
It's, yeah, okay, it says all new, okay, sign lighting shall originate from above and be focused on the sign face. External and internal sign lights shall not spill light beyond the edges of the sign or create glare beyond the immediate area of the sign. That was, I, all I'm trying to say is your backlit sign can't be so bright that. The guy trying to drive by on the street is blinded by it.
Yeah, I don't, you know, shall not create glare. It depends on, you know, what glare is.
That's how bright it is and.
Well, no, but I mean, from what distance and how many lumens and, uh, you know. Anyhow, I look forward to seeing.
Yeah, I mean, I I could go on and on, but I don't know that that's gonna be helpful. Or we can try to assign numbers to it, but I don't know that that will be helpful either because a sign that is. Thirty feet in from the edge of the road may not be a problem at all and a sign that is sitting five feet off the edge. Of of the road, you know, just on the other side of the sidewalk could be blinding.
Yeah, yeah. Public comment? I'm not sure how we're covering. I think you've said new or replacement. I'd I'd want to make sure that we are dealing somehow with. We're we're not gonna mess with existing lights, is that what?
But but it the overall thing is going, says that it does apply to replace outdoor light.
But it's, we are, yes, but so. People who are bugged right now by their neighbor's uh light. Um, if it's consistent with our current lighting, so.
Our current non-existent.
Yeah. Uh, that's, until they replace that bulb, but if they replace that bulb, do they have to comply?
No, no, replacing a bulb or a luminaire would not require, it's when you replace a fixture.
Well, then that, we, do we have that in here?
Well, that's, that's what this talks about.
Let me, defining a replacement?
Applicability, standards of this section apply to all new or replaced outdoor light fixtures or systems unless specifically exempted below.
Okay, and fixtures or systems would it would not include?
The bulbs.
New bulb, okay.
No. Tom, you started to say something.
Yeah, um, just a couple of public comments. First, Tim, I I understand your frustration about the existing lighting situations. I, I'm looking at this code and thinking, you know what? This is the perfect situation for a nonprofit to come in and fund replacement lights.
Right.
Especially for people who have difficulties with their neighbor's lights. Um, the uh, uh. Uh, the uh, what was it? Oh, the uh, thing I want to uh mention is in E. Uh, oh, I was gonna read glare, the definition of glare. Yet in, under the G terms, it says, the effect produced by a light source with the visual field. That is sufficiently brighter than the level to which the eyes are adapted. Such aptitude cause annoyance, discomfort, or loss of visual performance and ability. So.
Where's that definition?
Uh, under G terms, seventeen point forty-three point oh seven zero.
Great, I didn't remember seeing it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So I think that kind of gets to what you were talking about. It's gotta be a level that causes some problem.
Yeah, thank you. Here we just did definitions and I forgot.
Right.
So you're going to.
Yes.
Refine what you've had and then and share.
That I have.
Share that with the next.
I did, the only other thing I had is do we need definitions specific to lighting or can we rely on the amount we have? What, what do we? A lot of the other codes had these very outdated. Diagrams of light fixtures showing how they work. They are so outdated that I just didn't think that they. Provided much additional direction. I'm not sure we need that, but. How do you guys feel? Do you think you need a picture of a fully shielded light fixture?
Well, you know, it, it helped me when I came across those illustrations. So, you know, elsewhere.
I, I think I have some of that, some just like straightforward illustrations, not using pictures. Yeah, I think I have some for full cutoff and and fully shielded.
Almost every example I looked at was the same ones and they just weren't very good.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, if if you come across good illustrations, I think, I think they're, they're helpful for fully shielded and. Uh, fully cut off. Uh, I have one, one thing on uh submission of plans, so we're in E two. Do we want to include Kelvin rating in the list of uh type, wattage, lumen output? I would put Kelvin rating in there in shielding.
Doesn't it say somewhere?
Well, we talk about.
Descriptions including lamp or bulb type, wattage, lumen output and shielding. So yours is saying that also the temperature?
Yeah, uh, we talk about Kelvin up above and I think including that. In that list would be good.
Okay.
Well, we look forward to.
So is there anything that we didn't talk about? That you guys believe should be in here? Like, we don't talk about ex, any kind of um. Like, we don't talk about ex, any kind of, um, exemptions for ag, I don't think.
Yeah, I thought it was in here.
So, so tractors out, doing plowing at night?
Temporary lighting for agricultural activities of limited duration.
I was thinking more, like, a lot of people will have a light pole with a pretty bright light on it. But it's on a big piece of property. They're not really bothering.
It's not bothering anybody.
Yeah.
They're usually not, and they need them for security purposes. Cause they're out in the middle of nowhere.
Out on their barn.
No lighting, so they're.
Uh, and, and there are requirements for that. In the energy. Right, so they're allowable under the code. Because they are either triggered by a motion sensor and they have a photocell that prevents them from coming on during the day. So, but yeah, some of them are pretty bright and it, we probably should say something about. Making sure that they're directed down. So, that's a good.
Yeah, making sure they're directed down makes a lot of sense. I have a, I have a situation where if a deer walks by my neighbor's house. He's got a big light, he's on right in my bedroom.
Well, and that's, but of course, he'd say, but I wanna get a picture of the lion or whatever that's out there, and if I direct it down.
Yeah, the wildlife cameras.
Yeah, the wildlife cameras, uh, shall we just?
That was exactly why we disas- dismantled one of our outdoor lights. No, because of the cat. Cat kept tripping it all night long.
Motion sensors sometimes are triggered by things you don't expect, but, okay. So, I will.
I have a question.
Yes.
On, in section E. And maybe this can be done with an illustration. One of the concerns people have is how tall the light fixtures are in commercial settings. Right, because, you know, what some people prefer is more shorter light fixtures. So you're, um, you know, if it's a, if it's a. Eighty foot light fixture, the whole eighty feet above the ground is, like you said, glare, right? And so you lose a big section of your dark horizon, dark sky horizon. Whereas if they're shorter and there's more of them, you have more dark sky, you know, to look at.
I had that in my notes, Tom, to talk about whether we should have any limitations on. Light pole heights in residential and non-residential.
It's obnoxious.
Or at least some, some statement here to recognize there's a preference for shorter lights. You know, in your plans.
Don't we have some lighting provisions in our parking? Uh, chapter?
For safety, yeah, exactly.
But, but we don't, doesn't go, doesn't deal with height for the.
Probably not, and they, you need. Depending on the ki- kind of parking lot and what kinds of vehicles are in it. Sometimes need them to be pretty high. We have had a problem in Murphy's with them. Delivery trucks running into light fixtures. But, so did, should we take a stab at having? Limitations on the, the height, and I think we're gonna have to have something here that. Says the plans can propose something different. And make an argument for why it's necessary, right? I mean, they have to submit plans and evidence of compliance, so. With everything else, we, there's always the possibility to show an alternate method of compliance. That achieves the same goal.
But that raises a question, when we're talking in, in under E, any application for a permit? What, this is an application to the planning director? What, what application are we talking about?
They're on your building permit application. So I wondered about that, who is going to be reviewing them?
So.
Yeah, I mean, the planning reviews all building permit applications. Not all, there are some exemptions, but.
So it would be that, it would be.
But we don't normally look at lighting, that's something generally. I mean, I suppose we could start looking at lighting now that we have a lighting section. Just as we do parking and landscaping for commercial buildings. Um, you know, I'm, I'm not necessarily looking at the structure of, of a building plan. I'm verifying things like height and setbacks and parking requirements and landscape requirements. So I suppose in this case, now that we have a lighting section, we would then be, um, reviewing.
Yeah, I would think, I would think that's where the burden of this section's gonna fall.
But it comes to us in the form of a building.
Building permit, so the applications to the building department. Gets referred to you.
Yes, there's, there's a process that includes the planning department and requires a review and sign off. Even an inspection at some point.
You would be looking at all this stuff under E.
We, we certainly could now that it's included. We don't now, but.
Yeah, well, somebody. Somebody needs to.
So my concern would be that is there anybody who's actually gonna be able to. Evaluate those plans and the photometric plans. At the building department or the planning department, or just hanging around. To really know, and so really are you going to be evaluating the finished product? And then are we setting ourselves up for, but you approved my plans? And, so, that's my concern. Not so much with residential, which is already exempt from the photometric stuff, that's straightforward. But on a complicated commercial project?
Wouldn't have a clue as to what I was looking at.
Well, what you're looking, what the plans are, should show is the foot candle re- readings. Every ten feet within the property of the, of the site, and then also with beyond the property lines. And so that's where you match up with the foot candles that are either required or limited to. So, if, um, uh, if you're in industrial property. And you would look at, okay, does this plan show, what is the foot candle at the property line? And if it's point five, then you know it exceeds the point two five allowance that you have.
And Martha, I suppose we could probably require, just like, I mean, a licensed architect, right? Takes certain re- legal responsibilities, right? Um, you know, when it comes to like a landscape plan, we require. An, a landscape architect to certify that they're in compliance with the Muilo requirements. So I mean, we could do something similar in that, um, you know, whoever it is, whatever professional. Puts together a photometric plan, then they could s- certify, just like an engineer would do. Um, that they're in compliance with, um. These requirements.
Right.
So the review, review.
Which kind of puts the responsibility back upon the professional. And then, but we would still have to go out and do an inspection.
But if the plans themselves misstated something, well then you're on rec, that, you'd be on. You could easily check with the photometric plans, what they say. And that it complies with what we require. That, that's an easy one.
So if the photometric plan says one thing and we go out to do the inspection and it's entirely different. Then I suppose the, the answer would be, sorry, do it again. You didn't comply with the plan that you submitted.
The, the situation here is that most of our projects are pretty small scale projects. And rarely have a lighting designer and this level of attention to the specifications. And the fixtures are often not even selected until they're ready to put them up. So any bigger project, th- this is gonna be no problem for.
Yeah, it's the small, it's the little guy that's gonna have.
Small project, they're gonna, they can, they're gonna be making estimates. And if they're wrong and they actually see that.
It, it's just forcing them to make decisions earlier on.
Yeah.
And. I think we'll have, get pushback on that, but at least. We're letting them know that this is the intention.
But even the small project can be, you know, offensive. If not done properly.
Okay, well, I've, you've answered my question about application for a permit, then what happens? That's fine. The lighting expert.
We're lucky to hire anybody at all.
Yeah, it's a tough one, okay. So, I think that we are done for today unless there's something else that somebody. Desperately would like to discuss.
Did, did we decide what we're get, whether, whether or not we're gonna deal with the heights?
Yes, we're gonna, we're gonna try some language and see if we feel like we wanna keep it.
Great.
When we come back.
So what we did not cover today. Uh, environmental protection overlay.
Yeah, where have we left on?
Oh, I have a list. Let's see what my little.
Development standards next week, or next, yeah, next week. We're gonna do environmental protection overlay zone. Dark sky will be back with us. Now, where did we end up with the development and the TV zone?
Do we still need to?
Oh, we have to talk about that yet.
Okay.
My goodness.
I think. Well, then, then we're hoping to get input back. From the ag commissioner on animal production and maybe animal keeping.
I, are we done? Cause we took care of admin. We have, right, we have the limited exceptions.
I think we're.
Animal keeping.
With the exception of those few little outstanding things, I think we've now gone through the entire code. So, okay, so I, I interrupted you, so we are still, Martha and I are gonna take another stab at animal keeping. And, uh, in respect to RA and, and RR, right?
Actually. I think there's just those few items. So, hopefully we can get them done next Wednesday, and then on Thursday, if. It seems like, oh, we missed something, you guys notice when we're all done on Wednesday. We can do that after our item on Thursday, and then we will wait for it to come back to us when you're ready.
So we're gonna bring back TPC residential structures, or, um, dwellings, right? Uh, the animal keeping, um, the development standards. With Julie.
Dark sky.
Michelle's dark sky.
I think we should title the chapter Michelle's dark sky.
I think that.
Also, also my midnight memo from last.
Oh, yes, your midnight.
Your what?
The, the infecimo memo.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
And we had a.
I think our intention is to make decisions at that point. What, with whatever information we have available to us, and we'll just have to work it out next week. Enough for you guys to go forward. Even if we know that some things coming in two weeks later, yeah.
We had, I've forgotten what the issue was, but an environmental protection overlay zone, there was some reason we were.
There was some wording that we were talking about, but I thought we had it pretty much resolved.
Well, I had it down as something we still had left to do, and I, I, right now, I can't remember.
I know that there were questions, but it seems like Julie and Gina came back with information on that. Lot of it had, there was a lot of questions about. How it was applied, when it got applied. And then protections it afforded, and that's all really based on previous studies, that's how it got there.
I wasn't thinking that we had anything left.
I wrote that down when we were running through all the stuff we had left to do. Last time.
Airport, airstrips.
Oh, private airstrips.
Airstrips, those nasty little things.
Oh, the only, the only thing in the environmental protection overlay zone question was. Section seventeen point one zero point oh three zero. Oh, sorry, page fifty-eight.
Thank you.
And this is something we could probably do in two minutes here.
We can do it in two minutes.
Under, okay. The seventeen point one oh point oh three zero. B two. That was where we had. So it seems to me, what we do is designation of feasible mitigation measures. Would solve the problem. Does that work for you?
Um, I think so, I'm just trying to.
Sure.
I know maximum needs to go.
Yeah.
It would be helpful, actually, if we pause here, cause Gina and I have a couple of version. Things happening now that we're trying to keep control of. Um, and Gina, I thought we made, I didn't think this was. Something we thought we, I thought we already made.
It wasn't on my list.
We, we, we did not like the maximum feasible mitigation measures. Julie said she thought that was required, and then she said, whoops, no, it isn't required. And so we're trying to come up with a, a substitute.
I know, but you're wordsmithing today, and I think Gina and I. Maybe, I, I just am trying to not duplicate wordsmithing before we bring something back.
Well, okay, so next week, do you wanna make a suggestion for? Substitute to maximum feasible, or what? Or we just, we'll just leave it to you to make.
We just took maximum out, yeah, I mean, a lot of these, I, I mean, we've made so many changes. It's hard to bring back just one, but we did make note of your comment not liking maximum. This is number two, right?
That was, that, that language, as I understand it, was due to Julie's understanding, which she has said. Actually, her memo where she took back from that email said, ugh, sorry, I actually don't see it.
Could it say sufficient feasible mitigation measures to protect the resource in a program for monitoring and evaluating?
We just put feasible mitigation measures, we just took maximum out.
Okay. Okay?
Okay.
Fine.
I guess that's what I'm saying, like, we're, Gina and I are taking back all this, like, input and. And trying to, it's just a version control thing, that's why I'm just saying, like.
That, that was the reason I had it as something we were gonna take care of. Clear from Julie that we don't need maximum, you say feasible mitigation measures, that makes a lot of sense to me. So, don't worry about, don't worry about it, and let's cross it off the list. As something that's been solved.
Oh, yeah, cause it finishes with mitigation measures, that'll be sufficient, so I think it's fine. Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna check that off.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we just have a short list of cleanup then?
Well, we have the infecino midnight message, as, as Tom termed it. Which I, I haven't had a chance to look at.
I just skimmed.
Has
Well, it is short and it does include suggested language, so it gives
That's, that's a help, I appreciate that, Tom. Uh, I haven't read your, your, the attachment to it.
I, I read a portion of the attachments. Um, okay, so we're all very hopeful that next Wednesday, we will pretty much be through this phase.
Yes.
Don't be looking at me like that. And Martha's just really, really hoping. Wants to spend all her Wednesdays with us.
Yeah.
Okay, so if you guys have something you feel that we should concentrate on between now and then, if you could give us a hint, so that when we're going back to look at things, we're not off on some wild goose chase.
Okay. We'll think about that.
All right.
Okay.
So
So, this reconvene and
Next week, I've heard that the
Yes, he's here.
Great.
It's twenty-four.
So, yeah.
Twenty-four.
Which we may not even be meeting on the twenty-fourth.
Yeah.
So everyone's on the tenth?
On the tenth.
Good.
So we're okay. So this meeting's continued to next Wednesday, April tenth. And we're adjourning the meeting for now. Thank you, everyone.